Well, I guess. Okay, I guess while we're waiting before we start. I wanted to say quiet, well, quiet, which means hello, everyone in Sim. In the Simi Nation language, and I was quite fortunate to represent the mayor and the community of Jasper along with councillor Hall, Lisa Redell and Jenna McGrath from the municipality for a very warming ceremony that took place here at the Sixth Bridge Meeting Area. So usually we go into a traditional land acknowledgement, and I like to view, of course, every once in a while, and I want to challenge our future people in the chair to say hello in one of the languages of other representatives in the traditional territories that we honor. So I think it's a good idea, just because I think it adds a little bit more intent to just reading it off for those of us that don't have it memorized. And having said that, not only is this land the traditional territory meeting ground and gathering place, traveling route and home for the Sedemquik, but also for the Dinesa, Nahihawak, and the Chanavi, and Stoney Dakota, and Maiti. Having said all that, I would like to bring our committee of the whole of October 24th, 2023. It is now nine thirty-one. Do we, do we have any additions to the agenda? I think Richard's having me out over from Mayor Island. Keep getting cut out here. My talk went to what? Do I have any additions to the agenda? All right, we have councillor Melnick and then CEO Given.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demona. I would just like to add seven point nine, if I may. Just an update of the recent circumstances at the ice plant as of regarding regarding the ammonia leaks.
Right, I think that's, that'll be a good spot for it. Director Reed, I assume that you'll be speaking to, you'll be speaking to seven point eight. All right, perfect. All right, and then Mr. Given, you have an addition as well?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Demona, administration would like to request a in camera at the end of the meeting, an update for council on third-party negotiations. This, there's no expectation there be any business arising. So just want to update council with respect to some negotiations that are going.
Okay, all right, so then I would like to.
Thank you, madam.
Next, thank you. Then I would suggest that we make in camera for number eleven, and then we switch adjournment to number twelve on the agenda. Right, or closed, closed meeting? Okay. Any other additions? Right? With that, may I have a motion to approve the additions to the agenda today? Councillor Waxer, thank you. All in favor? Appreciate that, and may I have a motion to accept the agenda? Thank you, councillor Hall. All in favor? All right, that's carried. That moves us to number four on the agenda, business arising from the minutes. Do we have anything that needs addressing, correcting? Amending? All right, we have, we don't need to do that. Okay, so we're scooting right along to agenda item number five. We have a delegation today. Aaron Toop's here representing the Jasper Community Team Society. Over to you.
Awesome. Okay, good morning. Thank you so much for having me. So again, I'm representing the Jasper Community Team Society this morning. And we have a request for direction from council on some funding that you had provided to us around this time last year. So we came to council just about a year ago and requested some funding for one-on-one after-hours crisis support. And the nuance here is really that we were asking for funding for one-on-one crisis support to provide emotional support to people who found themselves in crisis in the community. So we, at the time, had just recently hired a crisis team contractor. They were engaged as of about September 2022, and they were part of the crisis team program that our board administered until June 30th, 2023. During that window from September 2022 to June 30th, 2023, our board did have the intent of scaling up our crisis team program to recruit volunteers. And those volunteers would have been the people that provided the the one-on-one crisis support. What our contractor did while engaged with our board was answer the phone, responded to people in crisis with financial support. So that that's different in that that emotional need was not being addressed. We starting kind of in in Q2, I guess, 2023, our board acknowledged that we had intended to scale up this program, but it was not happening yet. And so we started to ask ourselves some tough questions. What's our core purpose and what do we do well? And our core purpose at the Jasper Community Team Society is really about supporting the municipality of Jasper and residents of Jasper. And so we're.
You just have to press it again.
Is it telling me my time's up? So we're really, our strengths are focused on the community. We work closely with community outreach services and we help through the Carrying Community Fund and its nest of supporting programs help people in our community, residents specifically, overcome small but significant barriers to their well-being. And so thinking through this, we realized that a program like Crisis Team and that scaled-up vision where there's a bunch of volunteer coordinators or volunteers working under a contractor to us wasn't really meeting our strengths. We, as a board, didn't have capacity to oversee a program that requires quite a bit of risk management, thinking about that one-on-one support and people kind of in the community, it would require insurance and it would require more oversight of that whole portfolio, which was kind of stretching ourselves than because we have a whole other portfolio of work that we we already do at through our board. So that said, the outcome of kind of those discussions was that the Jasper Crisis Team has now been formed under its own board as a separate entity with its separate mandate. And because of this, and because there was no provision of that one-on-one volunteer kind of driven emotional support over the last year, we are still holding those funds that council provided to us last November. So we haven't we haven't used them because we haven't done what we committed to. And so our request today is for direction about how we can use those funds and one opportunity that we thought of that is very aligned with council's strategic priorities is to reallocate that money to our Carrying Community Fund, and that fund is directed at residents to find themselves in need and find themselves with a small but significant barrier to to their well-being. And so we know through working with with our municipal colleagues that there's just an escalating need in our community right now. We've seen a seventy percent growth in the people who subscribe to our Santa's Anonymous program over the last five years. We're expecting that to increase again this year. And so I think Jasper residents could really really use this this funding if that's a decision that that council makes today. So thanks for considering, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Toop. I would turn it over to councillors before I make any comments or ask any questions. Councillor Wilson, councillor Hall?
All right, thanks for the presentation. I just need a little bit more background, I guess. I remember when we allocated that money was it was to fill a void, and I think that void was victim services. And it sounds like, and it's always confusing with the acronyms, but there is a, the the old Victim Services Board has has become another board, and that's just Jasper Crisis Team. And I just, and and what is their mandate if not to fill the void that we originally allocated this money for?
It's very excellent that we have the exact same acronym, Jasper Crisis Team Society, as far as I understand. I cannot speak directly to their mandate, but I do understand that their aim is to provide that after-hours crisis support in the community, which was part of what the previous victim services organization was doing. But they, having their own board and their own mandate now, we were separate entities. And so I I'll maybe look to Lisa or Christopher if they have any more intel, but that's what I know.
Thank you, councillor. Lisa. Not put you on the spot, but if you want to or can.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Demona and all council, my understanding is that the Jasper Crisis Team Society is in the process of setting up as best they can that after-hours support, which includes the one-on-one emotional support paired with financial relief. So yeah, another organization is in the process of setting that up, for sure.
Okay, thank you for that. So yes, originally $12,500, and you know, I think even more would have gone to victim services for that support, that service. And I would caution, you know, allocating this money to something that originally wasn't the intent. I think the intent was to offer those after-hours services. So in my mind, I, why isn't in an option here to allocate funding to the new Jasper Crisis Team for the same services that originally the money was requested?
Your court.
Yeah, that is an option and and totally up to council. Just, I think the this money was allocated for the purposes of 2022, 2023, when that organization didn't exist. And we were administering that program, and that's why we've come to ask because there's, yeah, several interesting elements to it.
Thank you, councillor Wilson. Oh, sorry. Sorry, if I agree, Deputy Mayor Demona and through councillor Wilson, I will only add that this request does reflect more of the funding that was expended over the last period. So the Carrying Community Fund has been carrying extra demands partly because there was no Crisis Team, partly because our staff were pushed to the limit, partly because there were more needs. And so administration, my position from administration would be that in this case, it does make sense to, in essence, replenish the Carrying Community Fund through this fashion, which is where our support comes from. I do want to also make it clear that, of course, council, you can choose where you see the best use of these funds. They're they're back to you now because the Community Team Society cannot do what they were originally asking. They cannot do it. So back to your court, as you said, all back in your court.
Yeah, I was just, I was just looking at the request to make sure that I understood it completely. So just to clarify a little bit, because I think I got a little confused. So I think the request is to go to this year's current budget as it is right now, because that money's already been allocated, and we don't have a new request coming for 2024 yet from anyone at this point. So I think that's kind of.
Yeah, where I follow up would would be, I guess, maybe to Mr. Given is, will the Jasper Crisis Team, are they invited to to budget dispositions such as, you know, in the past, victim services would be in front of us stating their case for financial support?
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Demona, for councillor Wilson. Yeah, I've seen from administration that, yes, they have been invited. I believe they plan to attend, and so it's likely council will here or ask for that new organization.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demona. My question is, so what programs do does the community caring and support, and what would the money, what would the $12,500 be used for?
I'm also going to defer to Christopher and Lisa in fact, but the Carrying Community Fund is really for people who come to community outreach services in need, and when there aren't any provincial programs in place to support them. So it's kind of what Christopher's wording, but I've taken it because I love it. It's the safety net for the community where, you know, there's not another option and when we want to help help our residents out. That fund can also be used to support some of our other programs if they're oversubscribed. So an example that we're kind of looking at this fall would be the Child and Youth Participation Fund. We know that there's lots of kids programming that's starting up right now. And so that fund is there to help families who need a little extra support to access programs. And so the Carrying Community Fund, as an example, could potentially be used to to also support that program. So it's our it's our kind of biggest, most essential, but also our most flexible fund that can be used to top up other things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Another question is maybe for administration, and I apologize if I should notice, but have we supported the Jasper Community Team Society before as a municipality?
Sorry, we're all so polite. Deputy Mayor Demona to councillor Hall. The Jasper Community Team Society does not traditionally come to council at budget time to request money to support the Carrying Community Fund. However, the municipality in its role as a key partner with the Jasper Community Team Society, of course, supports the organization as we work very closely between community development and the Community Team Society as our funding arm. So in that way, we work very closely and in support of each other, but Community Team Society does not show up and ask for money for the Carrying Community Fund from council.
I think the best way of learning about the Jasper Community Team Society is to sit as a councillor on the board, which I I found very rewarding. So we have an organizational meeting coming up this afternoon. If your desires change, I recommend signing up for that one. I have councillor Keller Epi, and then anyone else via satellite, then councillor Melnick, and then Mayor Ireland.
Councillor Waxer has your virtual hand up, I think.
Oh, okay. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go councillor Waxer, councillor Keller Epi, and then councillor Melnick, and then I'm gonna go in the circle that I see, and then Mayor Ireland. Go ahead, councillor Waxer.
I actually didn't mean to have my hand up, but I I will speak to it in that the Carrying Community Fund fulfills a very important role in our community in ensuring the well-being of local residents. And I know that for about 25 years, it's been self-sustaining, but it, the demand on that fund has been absolutely unprecedented since the pandemic. And so I can speak to the value, to the value of the fund and its importance to vulnerable residents. And so I would vote in favor of this.
Thank you, councillor Waxer, councillor Keller Epi.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demona to you, to Ms. Toop. I'm interested, you had talked about that the phone was manned by a coordinator up to June, and that it took calls over the phone. I'm curious how many calls came in for that service?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me. That's a, that's a great question. I could, I can look into it and would be happy to try to answer that question later based on, it would be based on the reporting that our contractor had given to us while they were under our governance.
So if I'm understanding this right, then this contractor was hired for that position to take care of the crisis after hours. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Well, I do believe we should give that funding then because the community team has already, over the year, have acted on that. They had a coordinator till June, and they were taking care of those calls. So obviously, the community their funding for the Carrying Fund must have paid for that. Would I be correct in assuming that, Ms. Toop?
We did receive some funding that was put into the Crisis Team Fund at the time. So our, the Crisis Team Contractor was paid through a specific bucket of funding called the Crisis Team Fund on our books. So it wouldn't, the Carrying Community Fund would not have been used for that. There's probably some blur between like kind of those overall functions we do, like bookkeeping and administration, that would have had a little bit of an extra burden because of that extra program being under our roof. But we did receive funds through the previous victim services organization to govern the Crisis Team.
Thank you for that.
Great, good questions. Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demona. I, I'm wondering, will this leave a gap in our community where someone who is in need after hours on weekends, where will they turn to? And Director Reed or Ms. Toop, whoever can provide the most accurate answer, I think, is is what I'm looking for.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. We have Lisa Redell that's gonna answer that for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Demona, to councillor Melnick. In a crisis response situation after hours around the weekend, there's a Crisis Team phone number that is posted in a number of places where people can be referred to the Crisis Team call, like the Crisis Team line. So right now, that phone would be answered by the Crisis Team Coordinator, and supports would be put in place in the way of perhaps it's a hotel night, might be a bus ticket. So Crisis Team does provide that financial relief in the way of supporting individuals or families in crisis, whether they're residents or visitors after the hours of Monday to Friday, nine to five. If that individual remains in the community, let's say, when normal business hours resume, Monday to Friday, nine to four thirty, they could, of course, be referred over to COS for additional support. But that would be where people would go after hours at this time. So they would receive like financial relief, hotel room, bus ticket. And at this time, my understanding is that there's not the one-on-one support, the emotional support available. But I do feel that that is something that Crisis Team Society is working towards. That's it. I don't want to speak for them, so they might, they would have to give an official update.
Councillor Melnick, does that answer your question? Do you have anything further to expand on?
Well, I I do have another question that goes back to when we approved the $12,500. If memory serves me right, we also released funds that were being held from the former Jasper Crisis Society or Jasper Crisis Team. Am I making this up, or does anyone remember that?
I believe that was transferred, to my knowledge. And I'm getting some nods, but whether it is or not.
So could could we clarify, there was funds that were from before, we added to it. Now we're just specifically talking about the $12,005, correct?
Right.
That's right. Councillor Demona, or Deputy Mayor Demona through to councillor Melnick. The, that's, that's correct. As you recall, when the letter went to council, the motion was to release the $12,005 from 2022, and as well, the $12,005 from 2023. My understanding, and and Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the discussion today is about the $12,005 for 2022, as that fiscal year end has ended, and there's zero doubt in JCTS's mind that that money is not going to be spent by the JCTS for the purpose that council outlined in the motion. So that $12,005 is therefore up for discussion. The $12,005 for 2023, the calendar year hasn't ended. Should the Crisis Team Society be able to generate these services and and start this, you know, Jasper Community Team Society would probably then reevaluate what to do with that $12,005. So that helps to clarify.
Well, it does. And I guess my last question would be, we recently had a golf tournament which raised money, which went to the Jasper Crisis Team, understanding it's not part of the discussion of council money. But is the team sufficiently funded? For for the purposes.
Director Reed's going to attempt to answer your question, yes or not?
Deputy Mayor Demona, through councillor Melnick, we couldn't speak to their level of funding. That that would have to come from from them. When the Crisis Team Society was created, at that point, the Jasper Community Team Society has no sort of contact, there's no influence from this board to that board, or vice versa. So that information would have to come from the Jasper Crisis Team Society.
Councillor Melnick, I hope that satisfies your line of questioning. I'm going to go next to Mayor Ireland and then councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demona. I'll begin, Ms. Toop, by offering my respect and appreciation for bringing this matter forward in the way you have. I I think it just emphasizes integrity and transparency, and I really do appreciate that. It seems to me that on the wording of the motion, it is arguable that the Jasper Community Team Society is and has always been entitled to use these funds. You did create, with a contractor, a position. You indicated in your remarks that that contractor provided financial support, but not the emotional support, not the one-on-one. And I really appreciate this. You've recognized a nuance between what was asked and what may have been discussed, but what the actual motion was, because the motion doesn't speak at all about a restriction of these funds for one-on-one activities. And what we heard from your presentation and the contribution of Director Reed was that in fact, there were additional hits on the Carrying Community Fund to do the very work that I think these monies were intended to do. But it wasn't specific to the one-on-one, and yet council did not really, in my view, restrict the use of the funds to one-on-one. But you recognized that that was the nature of the discussion. So with, I think, great integrity and transparency, you brought it forward to to just resolve any doubt about that. If I may ask, the financial supports that were provided through the contractor, where did those funds come from?
I wish I had brought our bookkeeper with us. At a high level, those funds did come from the previous Victim Services Board, which allocated a pot of money to us called the Crisis Team Fund for our purposes. And so the financial will be. the Crisis Team Fund for our purposes. And so the financial will be um paid through that Crisis Team Fund, not the Caring Community.
Yes, I understand that uh if I may, when that money was transferred over, um it wasn't just our twelve thousand five hundred fifty million. Sorry.
If, if you want to expand the answer, go ahead. Otherwise, I, I will carry on. Okay, so as I understand it, then we allocated that twelve and a half thousand dollars and it sat there in a pot. And in the meantime, you took from a different pot and used that. Now you'd like to replenish that pot that you used from because you never actually used the one you gave. Um, and that, that seems to me um to accord with the overall intent that I I, I appreciate that um there is still a state of flux with the new Jasper Crisis Team Society and the old Jasper Victim Services. My question um for administration is this. We are now talking about budgeted funds from twenty twenty two and those books have been closed. What would happen if council said, give us that money back as we will find some way to reallocate, what happens to our twenty twenty two books?
Deputy Mayor Demota for Mayor Ireland, uh I think it has zero impact on our twenty twenty two books. We had an expenditure, the expenditure went out and, and was closed off. The organization uh in a later year chose to return those funds uh instead of showing us a revenue in twenty twenty three uh into municipality. Um, so I don't think it may impact on our, on our twenty two, I don't know how to say this.
Thank you, Ms. Tuke. Mayor Ireland?
I'll take one step um further. It's always dangerous to ask a question when you don't know the answer. At least that's what I've been taught. Um, but I'm going to assume that um there is no intent from the Jasper Community Team Society to apply directly to council for funding for this year. Is that correct?
That's correct. We haven't been invited and it's not something we typically do.
Thank you for that. Very much appreciate the uh, the presentation. And again, um great respect for the approach. Thank you.
I apologize for interjecting, trying to kill some space there. I'm gonna call Counselor Wilson up. Is anyone zooming in, want to speak to this again as well? After, okay, go ahead, uh Counsel Wilson.
No, I was just gonna say, it was uncomfortable allocating or giving the money to uh the suggested fund until I think uh Mrs. Rudell suggested, highlighted that it was twenty twenty two uh money, not the twenty twenty three, which still could be used. So I'm totally in support of the, you know, the motion today. Yeah, it was the only reason I, I was uncomfortable was that we have not yet to speak to the crisis team and our own questions around the table that and nobody can answer because they're a different group. So I was hoping to speak with them before allocating this money, but if it is twenty twenty two, and then I'm comfortable in that.
All right, well, um, thank you very much. I felt that was a healthy discussion and, and good learning experience. I really like supporting the caring community, but then I recommend anybody that's watching or will watch this to, to go online and uh search it and see some of the uh, the, the things that or components that it does, as well as um some of the community members that contribute to it. I know that there's uh quite a few businesses that uh sell certain items and proceeds of those items go into the Caring Community Fund, so I recommend supporting those. I don't have anything else to offer. Um, I, I would like a motion. Uh, Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Um, I would like to move that committee recommend council approve the reallocation of the twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the Caring Community Fund.
We have a motion on the floor. Would anybody like to speak to it? Anybody? Comments? Great, I will call that question. All in favor? Unanimously carried. Thank you very much. All right. I really appreciate your time. Thanks for coming forward to me. Moving right along. Now we are at Agenda Item Seven, uh that brings us to new business and it looks like um I'm the first to, I uh thank administration for putting those up. Did you want to give any reasons to that, Mr. Given? I know that we spoke briefly.
Yeah, absolutely Deputy Mayor Demota. Uh, administration uh was, in our agenda preparation, as we, we sort of realized that in the past, we've always added council member items at the end. Uh, we've had some need to act that especially on a long agenda item, that can mean that council uses all its energy by the time you get to the council member and added agenda items. So we thought we'd try it this way. Uh, we're open to feedback again, but we just thought, you know, it would give that opportunity for council to approach these sort of new items where there isn't background information being presented, uh where, while you're a little bit fresher. So we're happy to receive some feedback um on that. Uh, and there's a preference, you know, we're happy to, to work to council's uh
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Given. Uh, so um, I wanted to bring this up because I'm remiss for um missing out the meeting while I was away on holiday. I wish I was as dedicated as some of those other counselors. Uh, I just didn't have the opportunity to, to be able to zoom in at the time. And the discussion of the, of the delegation came up and I understand there's been a, a committee that, that may be drawn up with the terms of reference that may be coming forward. And all I wanted to say is that sometimes I feel that committees could uh extend the length of some processes. So I, I did bring this up at the Jasper Partnership Initiative. And uh my hope is to, to be reassigned to that, but if not, the reason I wanted to speak to this today is that when we spoke about it um at that level, years ago, when, when the initiative was first engaged, uh there wasn't a tourism Jasper component to it. And um, and the ski hill has been over, environment basin has been over on, on different delegations, but also representatives uh at the table as well as Parks Canada. And uh the newer representatives of Parks Canada were a little new to the conversation and didn't know that Hakone was in a national park. Some do, but the people present uh weren't there. And then uh as discussion broadened, the other members in the community that represent those agencies became a little bit more interested in the delegation. So we have an obligation or uh council is committed to an obligation with our two municipalities uh agreement or um association. But there are other interested parties in, including Tourism Jasper, who may be working with um one of the travel suppliers there, and this might help out a greater initiative as our community uh main industry is tourism. And uh I believe that there is a desire to broaden a delegation beyond uh the commitment that was initially between council um and the Chamber of Commerce with the community of Hakone. So uh I know that adds uh more elements to the conversation, but I just want to make sure that those other agencies aren't forgotten um in the discussion and part of the conversation. Because I, I think that it uh, if we have other members uh that are interested, it may be beneficial financially to the, the whole delegation. And it doesn't mean that everybody has to go to Hakone, but if we go over there and uh let's say one agency wants to go in a different direction to talk to tourism uh opportunities and uh same thing with our destination um area that wants to go and do something else. Um, but I recommend having a little bit more of a wholesome conversation through the committee or uh continue it at the Jasper Partnership Initiative. So I just wanted to make that short. I hope that wasn't too long. Uh, does anybody have anything to add to that or any questions? Seven point one. Your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. What did Mr. Given say earlier? Before our energies are already spent, mine might be already. I will engage in any event. I, I think in fairness, when the matter came before council, there was um a request for a decision and it had canvassed the role of other groups in the community and indicated interest in engagement, but not interested in leading the effort. And so I think as the committee forms and moves forward, it will use that research by administration uh to reach out to other groups in the community. But if the initiative is to be continued at all, it needs some leadership and the only potential leader at this time is the municipality. So that's, I think, why it was structured the way it was. I, I thought we got a, a very good big point. Made some decisions based on that, then I, I don't think there's any intent to leave any support untapped as we move forward.
Thank you very much. And that wasn't my intention. I just appreciate that and I appreciate the follow-up. Or it was just mainly because I missed it and that it's very close to merit. So I appreciate that and uh, but we're on a, on a good course. Anything else to add from anyone to the Hakone delegation? Thank you for your time. Uh, that moves us to seven point two. Uh, studded tire program and that's something that I brought forward. And I think in, in the past couple of years, uh once things started to ice up in the community or even in going into uh February, uh people have asked where that was and um regrettably forgot to break it up prior to budget discussions. So um I had a note somewhere that flashed up saying, bring this up. So I don't know uh if we have access to any uh funding um federally or provincially to um engage this in the community again, but uh I, I think it's something that we should do maybe every other year or every few years if there's funding available um for people that hadn't been able to access it before. Studded tires for bicycles are very expensive and I thought this was a great initiative. And uh I think to promote um active transportation, even in the wintertime, that this would be a good initiative as uh one of our commitments. So I guess uh my question is through uh to Mr. Given, if I may, do you know of any availability or should we direct you to go and source that out for grants or funding?
Uh Deputy Mayor Demota, I'm not aware of any sources of funding for that particular type of program. And just a quick sort of glance, the rest of the team doesn't, it's not immediately obvious. I think council has a couple of different approaches if you wish to follow up on this item. Uh, one would need to direct administration to uh return it a future committee of the whole meeting with uh information about any potential grant programs. So essentially to go away, do some research and come back. Uh, the other would be to refer the matter to the twenty twenty four budget discussions. And the difference between the two would be that likely administration would wait to research this. Uh, I would say would come back after budget. You know, to scour the corners of the agenda about what types of grant programs might exist. Uh, there might be something out there. Um, but I would imagine that would take some time and we likely wouldn't return before budget with a, some source of external funding. If council wishes to fund this directly or wishes to consider funding this directly, then that's something that you could do with budget. Um, so I think there's sort of two approaches. There's the sort of longer term, hey, let's research and find out if we can get somebody else's money to do this with. Or uh this is important enough that we want to consider adding it to the budget. And so please, administration, um bring forward a number of budget that council could consider. I think those are probably the two most direct options. Um, if it does go to budget, uh council, administration have the time to look at what the last program uh was funded, the amount the last program was funded to. We can bring that as a starting point. Um, and then council could have a discussion about whether you wish to see it as a budget program uh program that's funded subject to there being grants, you know, um. So you ask us to go away and do some research and come back in future time. That would likely be after budget. Or you could refer the matter to budget and administration could uh at least work out some details about what the previous program in Jasper looked like.
All right, let's go to that. Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Um, I like this idea a lot as it lines directly with our strategic priorities of the increasing opportunities for active transportation and alternate transportation ideas. Our counterparts in Bath have a program that they, uh like a rebate for e-bikes. It's a five hundred dollar uh per bike rebate that comes directly out of their visitor pay, parking program.
I didn't, uh, I didn't want to go there. I was gonna use the term, uh, you know, there, we might be uh seeing some good progress into a recently added new revenue source. Yeah, definitely. I, I think that's something that lines up really well with that initiative. Any of the Zoomers, uh would you like to uh contribute or give any advice or insight on motions? I could make a motion and um I, I like exploring different opportunities, maybe just not studded tires. But I, I think uh, you know, because we've had requests, I know it was to tell you know, runners and, and seniors in the community out for indoor uh walking or running. But I also think that, you know, in the wintertime, we need to, to really encourage other people to to get on their bikes or, or be more active. Maybe even a spike footwear program. Who knows? Should I? Yeah, I guess I could do that. It's just, yeah, I just wanted to feel that where council wanted to go on this, I can make a motion either way. So does anybody feel it'd be better as a as a budget discussion to refer it that way or um direct administration to go and find some sourcing that would come out uh after budget time? Okay, uh, your worship, if I may, defer the chair then, unless you want to say something. Okay, okay. I would like to then, well, actually, no, I don't have to. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, uh, well, I guess, yes. A little confused here. I would prefer the discussion to um the twenty twenty four budget discussion.
All right, thank you for that motion, Counselor Demota. Is there any debate on the motion, which is to refer discussion about a studded tire program acknowledging that it might expand um to the budget discussions for twenty twenty four budget? Any debate? I recall the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed? That is carried. I return the chair to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I hope that didn't raise too much of uh some leading energy there. Appreciate your strength and your time. Okay, um. We're approaching fifty minutes. We have a little bit more strength to go through now. Okay. Uh, we're gonna go to seven point three. I, I just appreciate everybody's time there. Uh, community and economic development, fond applications. I uh, what is it? That's Gordon, Ms. Rudella? Okay.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota and all of the council. Uh, in front of you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota and all of the council. Uh, in front of you is a report on the Community and Economic Development Fund. Um, so this is a relatively new process after council approved the revised policy B zero one seven, the one one seven, my apologies, in uh, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. So there's been one other intake in May, after which administration identified a bunch of opportunities where we could improve or just tweak the process to just keep getting better at this. Um, so what we did this time, which was a little different, was we shortened the application form. Um, and we supported potential applicants with an in-person information session. So we worked with people more one-on-one to help develop their applications and set people up for success. And, and then we simplified the scoring process and we've shared more of it here in a report that you see in front of you. So I've included a little timeline there, which is the call for proposals, when the intake deadline is. We try to get the RFD to committee within a month uh, from the intake deadline. And you'll see here that the project timeline we're talking about for this intake is January first to December thirty first of twenty twenty four. So we're just working with groups in advance so that they have time to set their projects up for success, should they be successful. So for this round of funding, it's a twelve-month project. Deadline was September fifteenth and the review is conducted by uh, Jenna McGrath, project coordinator and myself. Um, and then the results were shared with CIO Given for any just final review and approval. So we received five applications this time and then they're listed there, um, A, B, C, D, and E. Um, and there's a short summary of what each one applied to do. And then we've shared a little bit of the screening process and just the methodology for council. So initially, all applicants, pardon me, all applicants were screened against the criteria and the policy. So you've got your, your registered nonprofit organization governed by a democratically elected board of directors in good financial standing, all the basic criterias listed there. I'd like to just clarify that the two applicants, B and D, that have asterisks in the line that say in good financial standing. At the time this report was completed, that was the best information I had on hand and I've been now uh, brought up to speed that they are in good financial standing and it's just because of the um, rent waivers that it was appearing not. And so applicant B and D could be considered in good financial standing. Um, you'll see there's no X under applicant B as they were for uh, registered nonprofit governed by a democratically elected board of directors. And that's just, we ask each applicant to demonstrate that to be able to qualify for the funding. And applicant B uh, is not governed by a democratically elected board of directors. So next, we went through and scored each application just on how well each question was answered. So you can see those scores there. Um, and then following that, we considered how well are the activities proposed aligned with council's strategic priorities? And you can see the scores as well below. Um, so just trying to give council a bit of an idea of how the applications were reviewed and processed. So we are uh, recommending the awarding of five thousand, which is half of the total budget for the CED fund for twenty twenty four to, um, and the recommendation from administration is to three of the applicants. But as you can see in the alternatives, it's fully in council's court to determine exactly how you wish to allocate this funding. Um, we did make note that applicant B was not able to meet all of the criteria outlined in the policy. But their proposed activities align very well with the funding priorities. It was a very strong application. So we thought it was important to include it in this process. Applicant E's proposed activities did score lower in alignment with uh, council's strategic priorities. And that was the rationale for us not including them in the recommendation for funding. So a couple of key points for council to consider is whether um, you wish to see the standards in the policy amended uh, in order to say, receive applications for funding from like a for-profit corporation or maybe an individual in the community that's passionate about something. Um, something for council to consider. Uh, the CED fund is, is um, advancing several council's strategic priorities and um, the finances to administer the fund and to issue up to ten thousand dollars. Two external groups are in the draft twenty twenty four operating budget um, available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Hope we have a few questions. Thank you for that. I appreciate the detail and uh, the scoring matrix. It's uh, a good way to assess the uh, the allocation. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Dell, for uh, this report or I guess request. This may just be a question for my council colleagues. So this is a really new um, policy and maybe this is gonna spark a bit of conversation around it, but I'm I guess I'm a bit concerned or just I'm, I'm looking at the policy right now in front of me, um, organizations, programs that are ineligible. I wonder if we could have a conversation about groups we already fund. And I, I, I feel like we already fund these groups. So they're coming to us asking for more money. I wonder if that could be a bit of a conversation. And I, I also really um, like Mr. Dell's just a quick conversation about maybe individuals can come apply this money if they're if, if what they want to do is align with our priorities, um, because they, yeah, that's where he wants to turn.
I think those are good questions. CEO Given, go ahead.
Yeah, for, for council, I think uh, on uh, councillor Hall's uh, point, uh, reasonable discussion. Um, and I would say that council has sort of been two things to do here. We had a set of rules that people applied under and they were evaluated under and council probably uh, you know, appropriate approach would probably be to judge those applications based on the rules that were in place at the time they submitted. And then council may was to say, okay, the way that worked out, we might like to change the rules for the next time around. Uh, and so I would just be a little bit cautious about, you know, changing the rules after an application. So sort of please uh, uh, keep in mind that there are those two different things that were, you might be considering. One would be what's in front of you, should the awards be made in the way that they're evaluated here? Uh, this council wished to vary its decision, so we need to hold that ability. And if the rules need to be changed, then that's sort of a recommendation and a direction to administration for that next step.
Thank you, Mr. Given. That makes sense. Councillor, go, go ahead. Uh, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I join with that councillor Hall and the view that we ought to, after this, um, review the policy itself, but I think it maybe could use some adjustment. But applying the policy as it is, I really struggle with um, the Rocky Mountain Business Seminar and understanding how it meets the requirement under the project eligibility um, to demonstrate how the initiative contributes to community or economic development in Jasper. So as I understand that proposal, they will bring in roughly a hundred commerce students from around the country to take a seminar at Jasper Park Lodge. Um, the, the level of cost is so extreme compared to the other small items we get. Um, they get eighty thousand dollars worth of other sponsorship, six thousand dollars from, can't remember where, and seventy-five thousand dollars from um, attendees. I mean, this is a, a high-ticket thing for commerce students who have no connection to our community. They will come here for the seminar, go back to their universities, presumably graduate, go somewhere. But I do not see a connection to developing our community or our economy through that. And and we have other local groups who are trying to do really small things that will in fact engage the whole community. And I, I think the um, the habitat, as you indicated, um, really aligns with our goals here. And yet they don't qualify, um, because it's a private not-for-profit and doesn't have, as we have said, a democratically elected board of directors. So they don't qualify and yet they are trying to do exactly what we want on a really small scale. We have a total of ten thousand dollars that we administer in five thousand dollar allotments twice a year. This is grassroots stuff and I, I struggle to see how a seminar for external university students, um, they happen to come to Jasper for it, which I guess is, is good for the host venue and maybe somewhat beneficial to the local economy. But I don't see how that builds community. So I, I just struggle with that particular one. And I wonder whether that is what council intended um, by allocating this small amount annually to assist in economic or community development in our town.
I appreciate that you brought that up, your worship, because I understood that the the money that was going to be allocated was for local businesses to send representatives from Jasper, for Jasper residents who work in the community get to benefit from attending. Is that? Is it, is it that specific? Yes, this is you, Dell.
Deputy Mayor Demota, um, through all of council, my understanding is that the application was to allow uh, Jasper employers to send a total of eight of their employees to this seminar. Um, and so that local Jasperites would be able to engage in learning and training around uh, the topic of commerce and business. And absolutely that the seminar is uh, much broader, but that the applicant was asking to specifically be able to send local Jasperites to benefit from this learning.
If that is the case, I, I did not read that in material on the, on the agenda, but you may have more information than I.
Okay, um, councillor Melnick.
Aloha. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I did know that there, there was that specific training for Jasper employees to send eight employees to this conference. Um, my question would be, how would those employees be selected and from where? Um, and how are we gonna ensure that, you know, if we're gonna invest this, this is a smaller amount of money, I understand. Um, but you know, how are we gonna select? Is it high school students? Is it um, anyone who applies randomly and, and then attends a conference where they may be way over their head? Because they don't have the background or training for what's, you know, being uh, being done at this conference. I, I think it's a noble um, goal to uh, give local employees an opportunity to attend a conference drawing people from across Canada. Um, but I don't know how much, to Mayor Ireland's point, how much are we gonna see in the way of how is that gonna give back to the community or how are we going to be able to measure um, the fact that eight people went to a conference for four days? And um, how did that translate into how we make Jasper better? So I'm, I'm in line with Mayor Ireland's concern. This may not fall into the uh, the criteria of what we're trying to do on a local basis. Um, it's, I think, a bit of a stretch to, to uh, say, but by adding eight employees um, to a conference will, will impact Jasper in the long term.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. Councillor Waxer.
Uh, I would concur with both Mayor Ireland and councillor Melnick. I, I have exactly the same concerns.
Anyone else? Councillor Kelleruppi? Councillor Wilson? You did. Councillor Kelleruppi.
Yeah, I agree with Mayor Ireland and councillor Melnick. Um, I actually have attended this conference. And um, it's very beneficial. I was there as a judge, but I'm not sure. They're all, um, all the business cases are separated. Um, I'm not sure if our business students would learn a lot from it unless they're involved with the case studies from the beginning.
For that input, um, I was initially supportive of this and um, you know, I, I sit on community features and I have for a while and I know how important it is uh, to, to grow, um, to help uh, and support the uh, business economy in our community. And I think because of um, you know, the, the increase in costs and uh, the inability or the challenges that businesses have with retention. And I found that this would be a really good opportunity to, to support some of the business culture because council often, I believe, maybe not to the full extent that we want to, or some other community members want us to. But we do support a lot of uh, our initiatives and uh, you know, those, we did have a couple of requests there, but um, I, I find it very um, infrequently we get opportunities like this to, you know, uh, help those through some um, education and, and uh, support in the business community that way. And I, I think it's just a little bit of giving back because um, when we look at our uh, overall tax requisition, um, it is heavily supported by uh, the commercial sector. So to me, I think that any opportunity that we get, I understand that we don't have all the exact details, but if we can help promote uh, some knowledge and uh, growth from uh, our younger um, business oriented or uh, people in our community that desire to achieve a little higher, um, when it comes to that, I think it's worth supporting. So um, I might be the odd duck out on this one, but uh, I, I do support uh, that initiative. And the other two that were on that didn't give into us from administration. Councillor Wilson? Councillor Wilson?
No, I don't think you're the odd duck. I, I would agree with the, you councillor Demota, that uh, this fund is a community and economic development. And the other two, um, uh, successful candidates are more community-based, not economic. Basically, I think if we, it, it kind of levels itself out if there's one. And, and the fact that the, they're, they're offering an opportunity for uh, yeah, so if they found it here, Mayor Ireland says sponsor Jasper employers to send eight employees to the conferences, elevators. And I don't think uh, um, that's a, yeah, I think there's, there's some benefit there and I would support it.
Go ahead, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do stand corrected. There it is right in front of you. I, I did see that. So thank you, Mr. Dell, and thank you councillor um, Wilson for pointing that out. However, um, it brings up another issue, um, because the intent is to sponsor Jasper employers. Jasper employers are for-profit businesses and there is an ineligibility clause that says we can't do that. You, we can't sponsor a nonprofit which is indirectly sponsoring a for-profit. But I wonder whether administration has, has considered that aspect because as I read the policy, that is one of the elements of ineligibility.
I, I understand too, and we're intubating on this. I just, to me, it's who's making the request. Yeah, Mr. Given, you had your end up?
Well, Deputy Mayor Demota, there's no motion on the table, so I feel comfortable. Uh, that's, so that's where I will come in to say that I think from an administrative perspective, there is an applicant. Administration is judging the applicant who submitted paperwork. The applicant may choose to use those funds and apply them to you know, other types of individuals or businesses. So, so no, the current policy doesn't say who is ultimately gonna benefit from them, from the funds. It is who is the applicant. So that's where under that basis, uh, administration would exclude it. from them from the funds. It is who is the applicant. So that's where under that basis, uh administration would have excluded uh that.
Okay. Go ahead, your worship.
I I then just throw out the question again, um reconfirming the need, I think, to review the policy. But what could we possibly mean by saying the following types of organizations, programs are ineligible funding and saying nonprofit organizations sponsoring for-profit organizations? Um, you cannot do indirectly what you you can't do directly. So a for-profit organization cannot apply. And I think we've said, and a nonprofit organization can't apply on their behalf. It sure looks like that to me, but I'm open to other arguments.
It's a good point. I appreciate that. Uh. Mr. Del.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora and to Mayor Ireland. I think when we were looking at the applicants, um, considering a nonprofit organization could sponsor a for-profit in the way that they could enter into another agreement where they could receive this money from the municipality and then transfer it to a for-profit. And that would be where we would see that red flag, whereas in this situation, the applicant is going to receive the money and then effectively have eight free spots that they then offer to employers. And so that there's no transfer of money to a for-profit. And I think that again, as you guys have said, there's some nuance in the policy that you may wish to review. Um, that could be part of that, but with this policy, that would be where my my mind was going. Is there going to be a third-party agreement where where a for-profit is going to inadvertently then receive the money? And if not, it's still effectively with the nonprofit.
And then uh, sorry, I guess my question would be if if all eight applicants uh or all eight spots don't get filled, let's say there's now, does the same amount of money go to the four people? For an example, if there's only four people from the community and if uh not all the allocation gets used up, does that come back to the municipality? And then Counsel Wilson, go next.
Well, just sort of on on the opposite side of the argument, I guess it would, if we're looking at Jasper Local Food Society, uh, they suggested that uh, they would provide a fund to pay local artists for music uh at the um at the the, sorry, at the um local food store, it's going to be open, the the farmer's market. Um, so in essence, that musician would be financially benefiting from profiting from playing music at, but it's called an honorarium, so that may be different.
Uh, Mr. Del.
Okay, thanks for the question. Uh, Deputy Mayor Demora, you asked, do unused funds go back to the municipality? So community development works closely with all recipients of the fund to track their progress. There's a check-in call midway through the project and then a final report. And any funds that weren't able to be used as originally allocated wouldn't be, yeah, would be returned or wouldn't be issued to the successful candidate.
So the the thousand and somewhat dollars for the eight spots, uh, would that be divvied out? And again, I guess I the other part of my question, uh, by eight or by it would just go to assist the app, only the applicants that apply.
So the applicant Rocky Mountain Business Seminar applied for a certain amount of money to be able to send eight employees to this seminar. Should council choose to fund them a lower amount of money, community development would then reach out to them and renegotiate what would be doable for this lower amount of grant funding and then proceed with an agreed-upon plan.
All right, I guess maybe for clarity, do we know that there are eight um businesses that have eight people that are ready to go?
We don't.
Okay, we don't know that. Counsel Melnick, is that, do you have your hand up? Thank you, Counselor.
Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, I just want to alert the chair that um I'm cutting in and out on internet, so um uh, I may or may not be on the screen. It's not that I'm not interested. It's that uh my internet is resetting. Um, regarding what I heard, we're regarding excess funds or funds not if eight people don't go. We're actually not funding the total request. We're only funding it by, you know, sixty-seven percent uh of the request. Um, and I think once the the funds are are allocated, if we choose to support this initiative, um, whether there's two people, four people, or eight people, um it'll be up to the Rocky Mountain Business Seminar to to make that work. I just, I'm just concerned that it needs to be equitable where where people across the community can have an opportunity to attend if we're going to support this. That's that's one of my biggest concerns. Um, and I think um there was some notice or some comment made about if the spots aren't filled, I noticed under point five under older adults, if not students, can attend the event as business professionals. And I think I have frozen.
Maybe, maybe my mind a little, but no, you came through uh quite clear. Thank you for that. Um. Any other questions? Or support anyway? Would someone like to make a motion? For the entire thing or break it up? Counselor Hall.
I would like to make a motion. I'm just going to go with the easiest one to start. Um, this is a new policy. This is our second round of funding requests. We've seen how it works now twice, and I do think we absolutely need to review this policy. Um, I would like to make a motion that committee direct administration to bring this EDF policy to a future, maybe the whole meeting for review.
Okay, let's start. Okay, um, we have a motion. Um, is there any debate? Anybody like to make comments? I certainly support that. All in favor? All in favor that's carried unanimously? Do we have a motion on the specific recommendation for council through committee? Yeah, um, I can.
Yeah, if there's no other um motions out there, I would I would support the motion in front of us. Um, and leave it up to anybody else to if they want to. When I was just going to step down and make the motion, so if you want to do that. No, I would make the motion that committee recommend council through the following grants from the Economic and or Community and Economic Development Fund, uh, one thousand seven hundred sixty-five to Rocky Mountain Business Seminar, one thousand six hundred sixty-five to Jasper Local Food Society, and one thousand six hundred sixty-five to Jasper's Jasper Artist Building.
All right. Heard that. Um, is there any debate on or comments to make on that motion? Counselor Melick? Counselor Hall? Nope, he's just adjusting his screen. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm not sure how comfortable I am awarding more money to a group we already run.
All right, uh, and does that um, is is that referring to the the Food Society or the Jasper Artist Guild or both?
Can the question administration, how do we sup, do we support the Food Society yearly? Do they come to us asking for money? Like JACAs?
I believe uh
Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor Demora, uh, so the municipality uh supports the local food food society in a number of ways, but they have not come and made in the past, they have not regularly come and made requests uh for direct financial support.
All right. Um, would you be wanting to break that up then and then?
I just want to think about this.
That's fine. Your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. There is a motion before us. I am going to move an amendment to that motion. Um, and the amendment is to substitute this, let me check the uh the name. The Narcistic Abuse Survivor Foundation for Rocky Mountain Business Seminar and otherwise leave the motion unchanged. I do that because until I read this agenda, I had no inkling that there were survivors of narcissistic abuse. And yet that report indicates that there are at least seven specific cases in Jasper that could use support. And it's a maybe a stretch to see that as community development, but it is certainly community wellness. And if we have seven people who are subject to abuse and could benefit from um the intervention of this society or the the council or teaching that they provide, that is certainly equal, I think, to the eight people who might attend a business seminar. And when I compare the two, um, suppose our two largest employers send four people each to the business seminar, um they are for for-profit businesses. If there is value in doing that, they will do it. Um, but victims of abuse um in our community need some support, and I would rather see unlimited funds be used uh for that purpose than the other. And I I acknowledge again that it is a stretch maybe to see that as um, community development. It's not economic development, but um, it benefits community in the long run. So a very specific um amendment and um if it fails, the the motion is still there exactly as put forward by Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, worship. I appreciate that insight. Um, Counsel Melick, did I see your hand up? No? Okay, well, that's a the pretty compelling argument. Um, so we have an amendment request on the floor. Does anybody have any debate or other questions on that? Any comments? Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna, sorry. Okay, Counsel Wilson.
Um, yeah, I I I'm happy you you um put this forward. I I I guess my only question is uh why do you think the Rocky Mountain Seminar is less um is less beneficial than, you know, say Jasper Local Foods, whom we support fair amount already in in many ways um or or the uh Ja- uh JAC who we also support financially um as well?
My own um interpretation of our policy is that with the exception potentially of um adult individuals ongoing applying, which is not part of the application, the funds for the Rocky Mountain Seminar will assist for-profit businesses. That's who gets to send their employees. If they want to do that, they can do it. This fund was not set up, um, I think, to to benefit um directly employers. And that's, I I still struggle with how they fit within the intended scheme, recognizing that the intended scheme is is now subject to review anyway, but it's it's not that there might not be value, but it's not something that I think was intended to be covered by our policy in the first place.
If I may make a comment on that, I'm I'm not sure if this is the way everybody wants to go or or uh maybe take some of the mayor's uh insight and apply it to one of the other applications. I'm not sure. But for me, um, I recently uh took a a wine seminar that was provided in our community through another agency. And um there was some provincial funding, uh, some grants that were available for that for almost a similar type of scenario. And it made it more affordable for employers. So we we automatically assume that when we talk about employers in the community, that it's going to be a big hotel business. We don't know that. You don't know if it's going to be, you know, a big company that's going to be sending them. Like, what if it's the skill, or, you know, someone in accounting there? I'm not sure. Or if it's the tramway, or if it's somebody that owns a couple of retail stores that is, you know, wants their manager to learn a little bit more about, you know, business in the community. I we don't, we don't have those because we don't know who's applying it. So I I would say that because my employer at the time benefited from some funding that came their way, I was, it it made it more affordable for me to go to a seminar as well as twenty-three other people in the community that some of them otherwise wouldn't, their their um owners wouldn't be able to send them to. So um, you know, in that argument, I still support um going ahead with Counsel Wilson's original motion. So that's just my point. Anyone else? Counsel Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I know there's an amendment on the table and motion on the table, but I wonder if we just could have split these three into three separate votes to, I'm kind of knocking off.
I think that has to be the next step after them, the amendment, or given that, we see that now. I don't think it can.
The uh amendment is on the floor, and so I believe uh council has to deal with the amendment first. Uh, that amends the main motion, and as any council member wished, they could just simply request to have the motion split, and then council could vote on the split motion as amended or as originally proposed.
Unfortunately, I've been kicked off my uh my screen here anyway. So I don't I don't know the the actual name. It's an artistic um survivor abuse.
Narcistic.
Narcissistic abuse.
Survivor.
So everyone understands the the um requested amendment.
So may maybe just for the benefit of uh our record, I believe Mayor Ireland's motion was essentially to swap the uh survivors of narc- narcissis- narcissistic abuse uh in and swap out the funding for the Rocky Mountain Business Seminar. So it was just essentially a motion to amend the mo- motion to amend by swapping those two.
Thank you for helping me clarify that. I just didn't have the the name of the organization in front of me, so I appreciate that. Um, I'm going to call that. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion's defeated? Thank you.
Um, for the record, for the record, um I don't know what I was voting on because I lost connectivity, so. So I didn't, I didn't vote, and the it should be however number four or however number against. But I wasn't involved in the conversation leading up to the vote, so I regained connectivity when you called the vote. Um, and if that's acceptable to the chair, that because of connectivity issues, that only six counselors voted.
It's like you went to the bathroom, just was absent.
Yes, man, we'll just uh have you uh absent through the vote because if you're available, you have to vote. So um, you were absent and.
I was not available, correct, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Right, so um was there a desire to break up the motion to three or is we have a motion on the floor right now from Counsel Wilson to uh go ahead uh with the recommended uh motion?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Yes, I would wonder if there's any opposition to splitting the motion up into three motions? I would request the motion be split up into three, please.
All right. So I will break those up so that we have the first one, the committee recommend council approve the following grant from the Community and Economic Development Fund for the amount of $1,665 to the Rocky Mountain Business Seminar. Any debate on that one? You know, this is, this is breaking up Councilor Wilson's motion as a request from Councilor Hall. Sorry, I know it is very confusing. So I should ask if everybody understood that. So question number one of three under that motion. Any debate? Okay, we'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed?
It's just keep Cameron in both. Nope, she just.
So Councilor Waxer, you're opposed? So we have three in favor, four opposed. That motion's defeated. That part of the motion. Okay. So that'll move us to the second one. Under the same question, $1,665 to the Jasper Local Food Society. Any debate? Any comments? Call it. All in favor? That's carried unanimously. And the third part, $1,665 to the Jasper Artist Guild. Call that question. Any debate? Any comments? All in favor? Opposed? One, two, three.
Three, four in favor.
Three opposed, four. Sorry, that was four in favor? Can I see who's opposed again? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much for the record. All right. Does it, yes, go ahead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. No questions for administration with the money that isn't awarded. We'll just move to the next year. Are we able?
Thank you for the question Deputy Mayor Demota through to Councilor Hall. Any allocated funds would just sit and be available for future round of funding?
So just for clarification on my part with the other applicants. You're saying that they're all in good standing now and the other ones that didn't aside from the survivors of narcissistic abuse and the Rocky Mountain Business Seminar do qualify. They just didn't rank as high as these three for your recommendation.
Yep, for the recommendation Deputy Mayor Demota, the Narcissistic Abuse Survivors Foundation ranked lower on alignment to council strategic priorities and that was the rationale for us to not recommend them.
So.
And Rocky Mountain Business Seminar was in the, in the three that we did recommend.
Right. And then we had IITAD. Correct?
Yeah.
And was there a six application there?
Oh, no, there was only five.
There's only five. Okay.
Yeah.
I apologize again. I just, I'm dealing with some technical issues here. So if, if, if there is a counselor that would like to make another motion to support those, that other one. No? Okay. Is there any more discussion on the Community and Economic Development Fund applications? Seven point three, Councilor Waxer.
I wondered whether Mayor Ireland's earlier motion to put the narcissistic abuse foundation could that, could, could a motion be made now to, to award that amount? Because I had concerns about two of the applications, so I didn't. I voted in opposition to his motion because I didn't want to include the other two pieces. But I might be interested in supporting the narcissistic foundation now as a separate engine, as separate from the group.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, you know, if you factor in nuance, some might assume that it's the same motion. However, I would, if somebody was going to put a motion to specifically support that, I feel that it would be an entirely different motion than the initial motion to amend. If others see it that way and are comfortable with going forward and the counselor wants to make that motion. I think I have an okay nod from administration that we would be in line. So if someone's comfortable to do that. Go ahead, Councilor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I'm now prepared to take a motion right now. I just want to say this conversation's been great and really solidifies the need for a conversation about this policy because I absolutely wish that the Habitat for the Arts could qualify because I feel like they're, what they want to do is absolutely in line with what we want this fund for.
I know that I made comments in the past about my opinion in policies being flawed or inadequate. And we've found some gaps in this one and, you know, admitting that it is tough to make decisions, but I think on this scale, you know, I appreciate the debate as well. And I think we have some good commentary and opinions to help us form a better policy going around. Councilor Wilson, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Councilor. I'll, you know, bring up the the suggestion that we have to have a conversation about this policy. But I think what's also quite glaring is that there's a group there that we support annually to a tune of $50,000 that does not have a democratically elected board. I'm not comfortable going ahead. If we're not comfortable, you know, awarding them $1,600, I'm not comfortable awarding them $50,000 annually or whatever, whatever it is. So I think that conversation has to be had this year at budget with the representatives of Habitat. I think they're, they should be required to have more than just two individuals on representing that, that group.
Well, I'm very intrigued by the debate and appreciative of the discussions. There's not a motion on the floor, so I wouldn't be considered answering the debate. So I, I Counselor. Director Reed has his hand up. Sir.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Again, knowing that there isn't a motion on the floor. I only want to highlight that the intake period for phase two of this grant should council change the policy. And some of the other, well, in this particular case Habitat's grant would, would then be eligible under any new change you make to the policy. They would receive the funding in time for this year's proposed or for the 24 proposed activities. So I guess I'm just trying to say you do have some time. You don't have to rush to make a motion today.
Thank you Director Reed. Mr. Given and Deputy Mayor Demota, I think similar to Director Reed. Certainly this is the type of thing that the council can consider at budget time. You know, the groups will have an opportunity to come forward and request funds. Council will probably weigh a number of different factors and this might be one of the ones the council chooses to weigh. Certainly won't presuppose that, but council does have an upcoming opportunity to consider, you know, this issue when and if this group comes forward to make a request.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion again and the learning from this. Councilor Wilson, did you want to follow up? Okay. And oh, go ahead, your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I just wanted to speak to Councilor Waxer's comments. I made the amendment to substitute E for A in the list because E was the only one that was at least still somewhat eligible, B having been excluded because of the wording of the policy. So given those options, I was motivated to substitute that, but we are now down to a standalone application and I I support administration's view that this is not really very closely aligned. Although it might be aligned with our social consciousnesses as a council and as a community, it's not really very well aligned with the Community and Economic Development Fund. And so if the fund, the unallocated portion is simply going to return, I would rather, I think, look at a broad range of applications rather than move now to fund something which I thought was preferable to A, but council has decided otherwise. So I, I appreciate your approach, Councilor Waxer. And if you make a motion, you might convince me otherwise. But the reason I haven't made the motion is that we have limited funds. They are still available. There might be other groups that are more closely aligned with our policy that will apply for the next round of funding. So I'm hopeful that maybe those survivors of narcissistic abuse in Jasper will find avenues to access the services that that foundation can provide. But this is probably not the best way to do that.
Councilor Waxer?
I have no concerns with that. I, I, mine was more of a question if, if, if it needed to come up again. Thank you for, for your comments.
All right. Well, that took us almost an hour for seven point three. It was good debate and I think it was healthy for council to go through that. But I'd like to call a recess and come back in about 10 minutes. Let's, let's call it 11:25. Just a little bit longer than that. Does that work for everybody? All right. Thank you. Councilor Melick, I missed you on our break. I actually thought you were here. I was talking to an empty space. Thinking you were there. All right. It is now 11:25. Still 11:25. I'd like to proceed on to seven point four of our agenda. The Bitowski Scholarship Transfer, Bitowski, sorry, Scholarship Transfer. We'd like to lead the conversation on that. Okay, Director Naddell, welcome.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. The item in front of you today is to consider administration or the municipality of Jasper transferring funds from the Bitowski Scholarship Fund to the Jasper Healthcare Foundation. In a nutshell, we had several scholarships under our care and administration in the past. I believe this was due to our previous role as the school district. And around 2018, we transferred most of those scholarships to Grand Yellowhead Public School Division, who does administer scholarships on behalf of several communities. And part of that process was to ensure that the existing funding criteria would go along with the funds so that the original intent from the funders could be continued through that transfer and that Jasper students, for the most part, would be still entitled to have access to those funds. And the Bitowski Scholarship was one that was not transferred for numerous reasons. And the main one being that we did not have criteria on file at the time. So we couldn't confidently transfer the funds and ensure that their purpose was to be continued. And through various different items, but essentially one resident who used to be involved in the Health Council previously and also through ongoing conversations with the Healthcare Foundation, there has been a determination that the Healthcare Foundation is in fact interested in taking over the funds themselves and the administration of them in a very similar fashion than we did with Grand Yellowhead Public School Division a few years ago. And in trying to track down ownership or authority over those funds, because the healthcare, I'm looking for the right name here. The Jasper Community Health Council was disbanded some time ago. And there was a formal transfer of the funds to the municipality of Jasper. We do believe that it is within our jurisdiction to approve a transfer. And like I said, and as is worded in the recommendation, that that transfer would be subject to the completion of a memorandum of understanding outlining a commitment to administer the scholarships in accordance with the original funder's intention. The Healthcare Foundation is well aware of that. And just to make sure that we follow due process on our end, we believe a council motion would be an adequate way to make sure the transfer can be done and there's an appropriate paper trail in that we can proceed with transferring the last of the scholarships that are still in our care. And I have confirmed with the finance team, we have just under $18,000 in our bank account essentially. And we have not been issuing any scholarships since we've received the money. So it's only been accumulating interest, which as you can see from the attached non-criteria, the interest on an initial $10,000 investment is what could be available for scholarships. So technically this would get up to $8,000 back in the hands of a body that can actually allocate scholarships and hopefully into the pockets of students who need it. So this is here today as a committee recommend council type motion and would be looking for a motion approving the transfer at the next regular meeting. Thanks.
Very good and well stated. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Waxer has her hand up. Go ahead.
I was about to say that very well articulated and I, and I found the request for decision also very clear and to the point. And with that, I'm prepared to, to make the motion whenever it is appropriate, when other debate is over.
Well, I am welcome, I'm welcoming any questions or comments to make. And if there are none or when they're done, I'll go back to you and get you to put that motion forward. Does anybody else have any discussion or questions to administration? All right. Councilor Waxer?
Okay, I'm very happy to make this motion and especially as we have not been awarding the the scholarships. And I think it's wonderful that we'll now be able to get the money in the hands of people who are in fact pursuing further education in the area of health, healthcare. So my recommend, my motion is that committee recommend council approve the transfer of the Kowski Scholarship Fund to the Jasper Healthcare Foundation, subject to the completion of a memorandum of understanding outlining a commitment to administer the scholarships in accordance with the original funder's intentions.
Here we are 22 years later. Appreciate it. Is there any debate or questions now with the motions on the floor? All right, I will call that the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Councilor Melick is frozen, so.
He's just stern.
He's just stern, stoic.
That's his normal face.
He's not a stoic. Great. I will, because that was just about unanimous anyway. For all present minus Councilor Melick, I consider that. Uh, for all present minus Counselor Melnick, I consider that um carried. Will read the motion, Counselor Melnick. Uh, it was carried and you were frozen. Nice to see your face at least. Anyway, it's a contribution. All right, uh, any more discussion on seven point four before we move to seven point five? All right, uh, business licensing review. We would like to, okay, uh, Director Nadal, please thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. Um, we are back with in front of council with this item following. Uh, a direction in May of twenty twenty-three, where committee directed administration to. Return to a future meeting with a recommendation for an updated fee structure for business licensing in Jasper. Um, so administration has completed a review of uh several communities that are in Alberta. That are of similar size to us and focusing on the fee structure. Uh, business licensing is quite a broad topic and I think we've included some. Um, information in the discussion that sort of speaks to the the complexity and the systems and the purpose. Of the business licensing and what it could do. Um, but specifically focusing on the fees, um, you can find attached to the report as well some uh relevant information. Around the town of Banff and the town of Canmore business licensing fees, as well as the town of Hinton, which is not as. Complex in its structure, but still a neighboring community that's a good comparable for us. And um so administration's recommendation at this time, as outlined in the report, is to uh modify the bylaw. To bring the general fee, so maintain uh one single type of license. Uh, from a hundred and sixty-five dollars to a hundred and eighty-five dollars a year. Um. The bylaw was approved in two thousand eight, which means our fee has been the same since two thousand eight. Um, and given the complexity of the topic and um also our view that there's probably a fair bit of. Uh, public engagement or consultation that uh should likely occur with this item. Uh, we are recommending that committee refer the topic of a comprehensive review of the business licensing system to the twenty twenty-four. Council Strategic Planning Session for Discussion. Um, so without going into too much detail, um, as you can see under discussion, comprehensive licensing is what we do currently. Um, so it allows us to check that uh businesses are compliant with some of our regulations, generating insights. Uh, into what types of businesses are in the community, as well as providing a source of revenue. But there are a number of other. Goals or purposes that could be achieved uh through different regimes and um. Through our review of comparable Alberta communities, we've found a bit of everything. And um having that discussion during strategic priorities or. Um, getting a more in-depth conversation from council in some direction to administration would really help us. Uh, determine next steps in how we could update and modernize our practices, which would include probably a complete review of the bylaw. But as you can imagine, that is quite the, but the task would be uh time-consuming, so we would like to. Make sure that we have enough time for a thorough council discussion before we embark on that kind of discussion. And a similar uh tone or approach is is valid for the fee recommendations, so there's lots of opportunities. And lots of different things that council could be considering or doing at this time, but given the complexity of the matter and the potential impact on businesses. We are recommending to update the flat fee and save uh a broader, more detailed conversation. For at a later time, essentially. Thank you.
Hey, I say that you're on fire today. Appreciate that uh irrigate angle. And uh I I really enjoy coming through um the background information, so I think we're quite well informed. That way, um, I'll lead off with Counselor Melnick, who had his hand up and microphone up, right? So we'll take advantage of that here.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora, and uh I hope I don't lose connectivity uh during this portion. Director Naddon, can you confirm? Uh, you presented a number of comparisons. The model from Banff. Um, has some. Uh, dollar amounts that are associated with pillow counts and so on and restaurant seats. Do in fact they use the business licenses to fund their marketing?
Deputy Mayor Demora, through to Counselor Melnick, I believe you are correct. Um, that is my interpretation. We haven't verified directly with the town of Banff. But yes, uh, our current understanding is that the business licensing fee. Uh, functions to support the destination marketing organization in Banff, which is operated by the municipality. So the level of service that is offered for the fees that are collected is quite different than Jasper model.
So, in essence. This isn't going to be comparable unless we choose to take over marketing, so. I appreciate having the Banff model there. But in our instance, um, we don't have that ability, I believe. To tax.
One second, Counselor Melnick, we just, we kind of lost your audio, but it's not your fault. Um, we had a.
It's on the power bar as well? It's just that? No, I think I pulled this little cord right out.
Did the owl just fall?
Yeah, I apologize, the owl uh just got knocked off. It's uh purged there, but uh. I think it's just waking up again. Uh, do you want to do an audio test?
Test it.
Okay. I think we're good. Please, yeah, there you go.
All right, just just commenting that. The Banff model is not going to be comparable. When we're looking at the um business licensing fees, because again, a lot of that is all, I think all of this is dedicated almost. To specifically transferring monies to marketing.
I believe that's uh, that's the uh the model there. Uh, Director Naddal.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Um, thanks for the question, Counselor Melnick. It's it's a good one. And um I would suggest that the fees are not representative of the same service that is provided, but the structure itself perhaps could be considered as. A possible way to implement the model. It is, it is a business licensing model. That that is a a relevant one in in our opinion. The fees themselves is a different question, but. How the categories are determined and fleshed out could still be relevant.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, next question that. I've worked out of town for a lot of years, so I was dealing more with Parks Canada. And business licensing for the last number of years and the licensing that I was involved in. Uh, everything that you did, you needed a license. In other words, if you rented guest rooms, you had a restaurant. You had an ATM, you had laundry uh laundry machines, or you rented with uh recreational equipment. If you had a gift shop, your business license actually had to have all of those and you were charged. In each of those categories. So currently in town. If a hotel was to have all of those things or any of those things, do they require a business license at a hundred? Which proposed at a hundred and eighty-five dollars for each of those activities?
You know the answer to that one. You're just asking for the community, right? Counselor, Director Naddal, please.
Deputy Mayor Demora.
Actually, 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 point of order. I don't know the answer. Because I haven't been involved in local business licensing fees. I've been involved for the last number of years, dealing with Parks Canada.
All right, when the friendly banter is on your side, it's acceptable. Go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Demora, through to Counselor Melnick, um. It is, it is one license for all types of activities, as in the license, that comprehensive license would cover all activities. However, um, in the event of uh companies that own multiple properties, so multiple hotels under the same banner, for example. Each property needs its own business license. So that is how we operate that, but essentially. Uh, it is a flat fee, it is for all services and which means. A large hotel or a home-based business is subject to the same fee and the same type of licensing and it's the, it's the one license for a hundred and sixty-five dollars currently.
Accommodations for every one of those services. And why should a business? Be charged one fee of a hundred and sixty-five dollars if they're home-based business? Yet a standalone property with seven different operations at that. Be charged a hundred and sixty-five dollars. So when we're looking at the business licensing fee, I'd like to bring that to.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Melnick, if you want to try turning your camera up, but just doing audio, because uh. We, we lost you uh in your comment about uh the home-based and uh a larger business having different components. I do know that uh just having managed other businesses in the community that is. For an example, if you have a hotel with two food and beverage outlets on it, you do pay three different uh business licenses for those components. And I understand where you're going from and. So, I would. Are you, are you turning off your video? I'll get back to you in a second, Counselor Melnick.
He he's back.
Okay, all right.
I don't know, I don't know where I got cut off and I do have my audio off and I apologize for the uh. For the uh connectivity problems. It only started to happen after, after the sun came up.
Okay, when the bandwidth is being tapped. Okay, uh, we lost you after uh. You were making a reference between a larger business and home-based business.
Okay, I'm gonna try that again. And I think you may have just lost me. Am I still?
Yep.
Okay, my point is. If you have a a standalone building with seven different activities going on, should each of those be licensed as seven different activities? And I do know that you do need a business license for hotel rooms and you do need a business license for a restaurant. But those are the only two that I think I've ever seen on the local level.
You, Counselor Melnick, uh, Director Naddal has some information for us.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. Back to Counselor Melnick. I think the discussion about business categories could be. Helpful here and that's the type of discussion that we're recommending would be uh better suited at a focused session, perhaps at strategic priorities. Um, and I would say currently, I think Counselor or Deputy Mayor Demora and Counselor. Melnick, you're right in terms of if there are several businesses like registered as separate businesses. Operating from the same building, then yes, there is a requirement for each of those businesses to have a separate license. However, if um a service is provided by, say, a hotel, but that is not registered as its own business. Or called something different essentially, then it's covered by that comprehensive license. But the development of categories, and I think the town of Canmore and the town of Banff, whether the fees are are um in line with what. Council in Jasper would support, but certainly looking at those types of categories and what types of business activities you feel should be. Um, charged differently is the broader conversation that that requires more focus and and could be had at a different time.
Thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Melnick, are you satisfied with?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I I monopolize the conversation, but uh I'm gonna keep my video off and listen.
Yeah, and if you cut out one more time, I'm gonna excommunicate you from the meeting today, just for the uh benefit of expediency. Um, now, do you have any other questions on? Is any comments? Are there two on Zoom? I know that I I like the models uh from the other communities that were given to us in our package and it's really, I think it's beneficial to review. Um, the number and I I don't want to make this sound uh negative anyway, but I I have always felt that that was an arbitrary number. Because uh we don't factor in at bedtime uh for people that uh field calls or process. The licenses at the desk, we don't factor in, well, they might be factored in, but loosely, um. Fire inspections and all these other processes that take up municipal staff time. Um, and other things. Uh, so you know, we might have some uh a pretty. Some good revenue, but does it make up for all of the the time and expense that it takes the municipality as a whole to address? Businesses in the community when it be, when it comes to all those little factors like bylaw and it trickles down. Uh, so I think that, you know, maybe. Looking at a a little bit more of a a deeper review on the services and what it actually costs. Or, you know, getting a number close to that. Um, I'm, I've always been in favor in expanding. Um, the uses of those funds as opposed to just covering administrative costs. And what could that go to? I don't know. I don't think it should be a cash grab. But uh, you know, when we're talking about balancing different businesses out, like Counselor Melnick. Made a point to, um, you know, if if I'm just doing a home-based business that's, that doesn't have. Uh, a lot of exposure, should I be having the same as a hotel that has. Uh, two hundred rooms, let's say. So I think it's a very valid conversation. And I think it's worth exploring. Uh, I'm gonna do Counselor Wilson and then Counselor Waxer.
Um, maybe Counselor Ross first. I was, you know, definitely agree with all the conversation and that it should come back, but I was gonna put the motion forward.
Sure, all right. Um, Counselor Waxer, were you just turning off your camera? You are, you are okay. Um, your worship, did you have anything to add?
I was all set to make a motion, but Counselor Wilson, if you want. My motion then is that committee direct administration to bring forward amendments to the business licensing bylaw. To increase the general business license fee to one hundred and eighty-five dollars per year. And that committee refer the topic of a comprehensive review of the business licensing system. To the twenty twenty-four council strategic planning session for discussion. Speaking to the motion and to your recent comments, Deputy Mayor Demora. The hundred and sixty-five dollar amount that has been in place for um fifteen years. Was predicated on a principle that it was a fee for a service, not a tax, and it was to cover our costs. And you might be right that we have failed to include some costs. Um, my own um. Smartphone, when I go to the uh, to the inflation calculator. Tells me that a hundred and sixty-five dollars in two thousand and eight is now worth two hundred and thirty-three dollars. So we're even further behind than when we started with this increase. So I, I, I feel justified in, in the increase. I appreciate it's a twelve percent increase. Um, the twenty dollars on a hundred and sixty-five, however, it's less than one percent um per year over the last. Um, number of years, which is significantly less than the rate of inflation, so. If we were undermarket in two thousand and eight or further undermarket now, even with the increase. So I I think we should increase it and I fully agree that the entire um. Review of the, of the business licensing um format be reviewed. And I would invite um administration to consider whether. Of any of the examples that they have used of actual business licensing models. Is predicated on a policy direction from council. Appreciate Counselor um. Melnick indicating that in Banff, they they use the business licensing to fund their destination marketing. Um, but there are other communities that look at um business licensing. As revenue beyond the cost of providing the actual service. And so it would be nice to be able to compare um. The model in other communities against the policy direction if there is. the model in other communities against the policy direction, if there is one. All of that can come forward in that comprehensive review and um as part of the strategic session um for twenty twenty four. I think that's the appropriate time to deal with.
Thank you, Your worship. Does anybody else? Do other councillors have any comments or questions? Councillor Melnick?
I would just like to encourage administration to perhaps investigate what Parks Canada charges in the outlying accommodations for comparison. It is one of our most direct uh ways of comparing comparing licensing.
Yeah, and and I agree. I I think to speak in in favor of the motion, I just wanna personally say that I'm gonna support it because I think, you know, going forward, we don't factor in replacements of computers and software and all these other things that we need to facilitate that and it's part of a municipal operation. And you know, somebody from a hotel could say, well, it's you're just processing uh an application and it's no different than the person that has a B and B. And I differ. I I beg to differ and it it does factor in because of the 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 other components that are involved. So I think to to make it equitable um to where the time and effort and energy and uh when you look forward to uh you know, recapitalization on, you know, the the business as a whole uh for the service that we're offering should be contemplated. So um I think it's a healthy discussion and I really appreciate how it was brought forward in the detail and the quality. And it's easy to to make a decision to recommend to council today. So having heard the the motion, uh I'm gonna call it. All in favor? That's carried unanimously unanimously again. Appreciate that. Is there any more discussion on business licensing fee review? Any comments to make before we move on? Thank you. Seven point six transit partner contribution update. I believe that's you, Mr. Given. Thank you.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Demota. Um back in May, council directed administration to pursue partner contributions to offset the cost of public transportation and return to a future committee meeting with a report. This is that report. Um since that time, uh administration has uh secured three different partner contributions. The first two from school boards, uh Grand Yellowhead School Division and the Conseil Solaire Samson Nord um one for a hundred and fifteen thousand a year in the case of the Grand Yellowhead and forty thousand a year in the case of the Frankfond School Board. Um administration is currently working on service agreements with both of those as required under policy F one oh four. Uh and then the third one is uh contribution from Parks Canada. Uh they've provided forty five thousand dollars uh towards the service until the end of this calendar year. And they are uh considering a further request from the municipality of a hundred and forty five thousand dollars per year for the next three calendar years. Um and any contributions from Parks Canada in terms of uh agreements with the municipality would be covered under the previously approved value in the municipality and Parks Canada, which said that parks would seek operational funding, uh but didn't devise this amount. Uh so together these three contributions, um uh the committed funding, that's not taking forward to the hundred and forty five thousand, the committed funding outlined above totals two hundred thousand dollars, which is equal to approximately thirty seven percent of the cost of uh fuel and the service contract for the twenty twenty three, twenty four season. Uh and if Parks comes forward with that additional hundred and forty five, then the total external contributions would be equal to approximately fifty four percent uh of those costs. So this is simply an informational update about the status. Uh administration obviously will continue to seek external partner contributions. Uh we see opportunities in going into twenty twenty four to look at advertising the the vehicles um and and other opportunities. Obviously, right now, within the first couple of months of the service, uh we're focused on the rollout and the actual operation, uh tailoring that. Um but we want to ensure that we're following up on this request from council for some confirmation of what funding is coming in. And as you can see, um there is uh over approximately two hundred thousand dollars committed at that point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Sure, there's some questions from council. Um at one point, everybody on Zoom looked like they were frozen. Um I'm just making sure that uh none of you have your hand up thus far. Councillor Wilson, councillor Hall. Uh mayor had to step out. Um I guess the question that I might have, if there's nothing coming forward right now is um we we had um some information in the past on the types of revenue that the transit system could bring forward outside of any other external funding or um revenue source. Is there an opportunity with this investment to uh at least break even uh from transit fares? Um that are projected for at least twenty twenty four going forward?
Uh so with the the benefit of having my twenty twenty four budget book in front of me, I I think the answer is no. Um I'm not aware of a transit service uh in any municipality that breaks even. Um I think there's always an element to public service and public benefit. Um that said, I think that based on this amount of external funding, uh the Jasper Transit Service has the potential to be one of the highest um rate of return, the highest, uh sorry, I'm gonna hold back. The minute Jasper Transit System has the opportunity to be one of the lowest subsidy transit services uh certainly in Alberta. Um and I think that's by virtue of the fact that we have uh external partners and partnerships that are somewhat unique. Um and that we have the benefit of uh, you know, over the course of the summer season, even when we get a full summer season, um our visitor population. So um no, I don't believe that the service will be uh completely self sustaining. Um and uh if there were a point where the revenues from ridership uh were exceeding the costs, I think it's possible that uh some of our partners would start to have some questions about whether the municipality of Jasper was seeing this as a profit center and whether, you know, we were in at the same level as as they were. So again, it's a developing partnership, uh but the question that council had asked was, you know, how much come back and report to us on how much money you're able to secure? And so, you know, we're reporting that today.
Right. So uh go ahead, councillor Wilson.
Well, then, yeah, thank you for that. Um is has there been any um uh research or, you know, move movement forward on uh the ability to advertise on the buses, you know, is there any interest out there in the community um for that?
Uh thanks for the question councillor Wilson through Deputy Mayor Demota. Uh so administration hasn't taken uh any particular act of steps. We did some initial uh discussion about that. Uh but as I said, we've been really focused on the implementation of the service at the startup, uh which has been a pretty big task with a a number of uh different stakeholders. Um and the other thing that will be happening as council, remember, uh we will be getting new units in early twenty twenty four. And so we wouldn't start any app internal advertising in these existing units. Uh the new units uh would be something that if any investment in advertising or decolating or anything like that on the outside, um it would last longer than doing all these in-murder units that we have in service right now.
All right. Any other questions? I appreciate that. Um councillor Melnick?
So I do apologize again for the connectivity issues. For a week, there's never been this problem, but today seems to be the day. See, you know, given, I'm just given, I I seem to recall an estimate of about seventeen thousand dollars in fares. And I'm trying to remember if that was for a partial year or a full year. Can you um help me understand where that where additional revenue might come from and to what amount it might be over a full operating year?
Thanks very much for the question. Um I would have to pull out, uh I'd have to go back to my files uh to be able to find that information. I just don't have it at hand, uh councillor Melnick. Um but I believe you're correct that the estimation back in May was for approximately uh seventeen thousand in uh ridership revenue for the balance of the twenty twenty three year. I don't remember exactly what date, what start date we forecasted that on. Um and I can come back to council with the full year uh ridership's uh sorry, uh full year ticket fare revenue. Uh and certainly you'll be seeing that and uh and we'll have that full information in the twenty twenty four budget statement.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Melnick. Thank you, Mr. Given. Um there are any other questions on the information in front of us today? Right. Well, I'll go ahead councillor Wilson.
Um I'll make a motion that uh committee received the report for information.
Great, sounds good. I just wanted to to comment on that. Um you know, it it would be interesting when we look at the service uh that we provide to Parks Canada or sorry, that is provided to Parks Canada with all this and and weigh it out. Uh it's very important, I think, for us to have a local transportation system and I think it's also important for the accessibility of uh residents to be able to go out to uh outline areas. So there's a value in that. Uh but then also, um the only thing I'm I'm weary about in this whole process is again being um overcompensating for uh visitors that could be um contributing. Um and I know that we make that up in in fares, but we also, you know, help provide service to to Parks Canada as well. And I I don't mean to to, you know, draw a target towards them, but it's definitely worth uh looking at the value of the service uh that Parks Canada uh will be receiving on this. And if and if it's paying the 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 amount uh the one forty five is suitable, it's definitely um still worth uh reviewing to see what the balance is. So uh we have a motion for the recommendation uh to receive this report as information. I'm gonna call that to order. All in favor? That's carried. Uh that's all in favor and I appreciate that. Councillor Hall, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Um in the past month, I've heard from a quite a few residents regarding start times of our loops. Um especially for our high school students that are in town that don't qualify for the uh Grand Yellowhead bus. I'm wondering what an appetite, I'm I'm would like to make a motion. I'm just wondering what the appetite and council would be just exploring starting earlier so that uh high school students could jump on the bus or lodge staff or people that were at the JPL could get in town a little earlier.
Thank you councillor Hall. And I, is that a question that's directed to?
Totally interested in it. Um but uh yeah, definitely budget, you know, implications and um how soon do we want to increase it? Um I guess probably twenty 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 more, but.
I've also had some information uh for people that work in different industries that uh find that the the service stopped too early in the evening too. And that uh for the people that have shifts that don't finish at four o'clock or whatever it is, uh makes it a bit challenging to to race for the bus sometimes, but I think that's everywhere that doesn't have a twenty four hour service. Councillor Melnick, you had your hand up. Point of order.
I think point of order. I believe councillor Hall made a motion.
I mean, I will.
Um she said she might make a motion and I think she's working on one.
All right. Just just want to make sure what I heard and didn't hear with um the connectivity issues. And it's really quite appropriate that the next topic might address some of my connectivity issues.
Your worship?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Just speaking to councillor Hall's suggested motion, potentially proposed motion. My recollection was that when council approved going forward with scheduled bus service, we left it open to administration to adjust schedules as um ridership and other needs dictated. And so I would prefer that administration be made aware of concerns. Apparently, we need more of the service of the service that we probably didn't need in the first place, um according to to users. Um but I I I think the approach that I would prefer is to pass information along to administration who is already, I think, empowered to adjust schedules. But I I think it would be a dangerous road for us to travel, to have council try and by motion uh direct what changes might be made to the schedule. I I think a confirmation that um administration is open to make adjustments that work for the ridership that's is in order, but I'm fearful of council usurping um the the operational mandate that we've given to administration with respect to uh bus services. But I would, before you ask her, before you actually make a motion, while I can still engage administration, just ask directly to Mr. Given whether administration um is aware of the sorts of concerns raised by councillor Hall and others and whether there is a contemplated change in um level of service or the times of service so forth.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Demota for Mayor Island. So first, the administration certainly is empowered to adjust the schedule um within a certain, within a constraint, and the constraint is the number of hours that were put forward in the contracts with the operator. So uh and that's what the budget numbers are all built on. So um I think from from my perspective, uh we have latitude to adjust the service within that set sort of envelope uh and that the neck constraint, I think the number is three thousand seven hundred and ten annual hours of service. Um what is being requested uh most often in administration is tracking requests. Uh we've been receiving e-service requests from the municipality website. Um and the team have been categorizing them, um which has been really great. The requests that we see the most are earlier start times um and uh additional service for um in-town students who do not qualify for provincially funded student transportation. So right now, the province funds uh student transportation for K to six students. As soon as you get into grade seven, you can live in the same house as a grade six, but you don't qualify to be on the the student special transit route. Um administration is fully aware of that need. Uh we saw it coming. Um and uh we are looking at ways to to address that. Uh for example, um but it does one of the solutions, because I mean, you only make buses so big. Uh we already have a forty passenger, you know, a large bus for the uh the school special routes. Um and there are times when it is nearing capacity uh in town. And so the solution to that, a potential solution to that would be to have an additional bus going around and break the the town route into a couple of parts, you know. But that would be extra hours of service. And so uh as administration, yes, we can adjust the schedule. Uh we are looking at that. We would I think we would likely go through at least a little bit of an extended period of operation. Maybe we only change to our winter routes on, I think, October fifteenth. So it's actually very, very new and probably too early to say um that we know exactly what changes need to be done. That's some pretty early indications of what people would like. But we'd like to see the system operate for a while. I think as we head into twenty twenty four, administration will have a better sense of adjustments that we might make. Um and I think uh if council has an interest in understanding what it would take to increase the level of service, because, you know, would you get requests to start earlier, continue later and put more buses on so you can handle more people? Those are all above, you know, sort of the current level of service. Council would like to understand what an increase to the level of service could look like for twenty twenty four. That's something that administration could work up some numbers and bring back to budget if council wanted to, wanted to explore that. Again, explorers and consider, not necessarily approve.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Given. And I hope that satisfies some of the questioning here. From my perspective, if I may, I don't want to make this too long, but a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the school board is based on a formula, I'm assuming, and again, an arbitrary number. And based on certain grades at this point. So I would be curious, because Grand Yellowhead is a pretty broad region and covers many other communities, to what they're doing for those age groups when it comes to busing or providing transportation to those age levels. And, you know, are we in fact getting compensated enough with that funding brought to us? And I'm not saying it's good or bad, but I think it's just a point that if they have precedent in other areas, why is Jasper different than other communities? Yourself, or sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Demota. So Jasper is being treated exactly the same as any other community. The school division and municipality agreed that in our service agreement, it essentially spells out flow-through funding. That, you know, whatever the division is awarded under the provincial student transportation funding regulations that are approved and amended from time to time, that flows through to the municipality of Jasper based on the number of eligible students that are registered at, I think it's September thirtieth through October fifteenth. At a certain point in the year, there's a cutoff time and students that register for transportation qualify for funding under the provincial formula. And that money is directed to Jasper. The provincial formula says that there's, once you're over a certain age, if you live within two kilometers of the school, you should be able to get there. And so our grade sevens that live in the town site are not two kilometers away from the school. And so that's, that's what it is. So a grade, I believe that a grade seven, we'll just use that number, at JPL qualifies for transportation because they live more than two kilometers away from the school. So for most Grand Yellowhead communities where they're dealing with rural student transportation, they would likely be over two kilometers away from school.
If I may ask, two kilometers as the crow flies or two kilometers distance traveled on the road?
I would imagine it is distance traveled.
Thank you. Councilor Hall.
Deputy Mayor Demota, my question, I guess, would be for CEO Given. Would you just come to budget times with some new proposals of increased routes? Or do you need a motion to bring back in increased route information?
I think a motion would be helpful because if, you know, until council tells me that you're interested in hearing, I'll assume that the previously given direction continues to be the direction. So council's interested in hearing or seeing what that might look like. I think a motion would be in order.
Do you have a motion?
If that is the case, I would like to make a motion to direct administration to bring forward information about the cost of increasing transit level of service to the twenty twenty four budget discussions.
All right. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Or support? I agree. Go ahead, Council Wilson.
My question would just be to administration. Do we have the capacity to make this happen before twenty twenty four budget? Through Deputy Mayor Demota or Council Wilson? Yes. Our utilities and I'm going to call utilities and transit manager, but Mr. Michaud, who's taken on leadership, has already considered some of these things. But, you know, we certainly, we appreciate the relative sensitivity around transit. And we didn't want to, you know, appear to be administration coming and saying immediately, you know, that there's need, that council is hearing that there's need and there's an interest, nice to learn that. Administration be prepared to offer some, some options or alternatives for me to consider.
It's good. I think.
Council Waxer.
We had Council Waxer and frozen Council Melnick. And then the mayor.
I apologize, I couldn't hear clearly Councilor Hall's motion. If she could please repeat it.
You're in the diagram this time, please.
I would like to direct administration to bring forward information about the cost of increasing transit level of service to the twenty twenty four budget discussions.
Did you hear the motion, Councilor Hall?
I, I heard the last probably half of it. Do you mind repeating it?
Okay. I make a motion to direct administration to bring forward information about the cost of increasing transit level of service to the twenty twenty four budget discussions.
Thank you. All right, I've got nods. Councilor Keller, I'm sorry, I promised the mayor, but you can go ahead.
Thank you. Just on that, it'd be interesting also if administration could talk to the provider about tightening up the route. To see if some of the areas we go that there's not a lot of transportation in currently, that that might free up some time to put on the route earlier. Because I'm sure at this time of year, we're not getting a lot of people that are going up to Patricia Lake or out to Lake Anette. So maybe if those routes were shrunk to a kind of spring, that that would alleviate would give some time to increase the school road for in in Cabin Creek.
CEO Given has a response.
Certainly, that would be one of the things that we would look at. It is important to remember that our, our system has a number, has seasonality built into its routes. So for example, we're no longer going to the campsites, obviously. But also the diversion into Lake Anette and Lake Ete, I believe, is removed for the winter season as well. So that is already a part of the model, but there are probably other areas where we could, you know, we are, we are tracking usage by time of day, by stop and by route. And so we do have some of that information that allows us to consider, again, at this very, very early stage. You know, we've been in operation for less than two full months. But we are already tracking that data to say, okay, so what times of day are the peak times of day? Which stops are the, the peak stops and the most interest? And we can bring that information to council when we come forward at a budget that this motion was to carry.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. Hey, I'm generally supportive of the motion, but I wonder whether it would benefit from some clarity of purpose. So I think you said increased transit level of service. But in your earlier discussions, it seemed to be focused on an increased level of service directed at a particular demographic. And although I think administration understands that, as we work to make better motions throughout it, it just seems to me it would be useful to say, well, we don't want you to just go look at other ways to increase service. What we want is a focus on increased accessibility. I think you were indicating primarily for students earlier and later.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I, maybe we could add increasing transit levels of service in the morning hours. It has come from residents, the community approaching me about students not being able to get to school that don't qualify, as CEO Given was saying. And a public bus, often in cities where there's, you know, school transit, there are public buses that run early enough that students can get to school. And on that side too, there might be some adults, you know, on the outskirts of our town that don't, that would benefit from an earlier start. Also, maybe I would just add.
I have something.
Bring forward information about the cost of increasing transit levels of service in the morning hours. That's, that's the feedback I've been getting. I don't know if anyone else is getting that kind of feedback, but that, that's sort of the the specific feedback I've been getting.
If I be, CEO Given did say that, you know, they've got a pretty extensive they get pretty extensive.
Change everything, whereas I'm at twenty-eight percent.
Councilor Melnick, your mic is still on. But what I was going to suggest is extended hours in general. And I don't know if that satisfies what the mayor is suggesting, because there are other people other than the schoolchildren that are interested in going in the morning and or at night. But administration has better information than our anecdotal or circles of influence that, you know, where people reach out to us. And I would put that on them. So I, although it's not as specific as maybe the mayor's suggestion, but something that kind of talks about expanding hours in general. Go ahead, Council Wilson.
I would just like to raise my opinion in regards to timeline on this. I am not adverse to the information. I'm not adverse to expanding service. But we are, have only been operating two months and I feel like it may be too quick. Unfortunately, budget is coming up, but I don't think I'm in support of it. I'd like to gather more than just two months' worth of operation before changing what we've just brought into effect. Again, I think this is going to be successful. We have to like wade into public transit slowly and not build it out too quickly. Again, I do want to say I'm not adverse to information, but I'm not sure I want to be changing our operations so quickly.
Appreciate that, Council Wilson. Because it's committee of the whole, I'm really sticking to rules on how many times you're speaking to it. No, no, it's good. So if, if anybody wants to repot on that or provide more information, Council Melnick, I know we can't see you, but if you want to chime in, that's good as well. Feel like I'm losing my voice. Are you okay?
Council, Deputy Mayor Demota, I am good with the conversation. My apologies for the hot mic.
That's good. Council, Council Hall.
I, yeah, my motion isn't to increase levels of service, it's to get information about increasing levels of service. And when I hear from residents fairly consistently that that is something that they need, I know it's only been two months, but I think it could come to budget discussions and we don't have to vote it in. We can just look at the information and decide there.
Okay, so it could mean, just for clarity, if I may, that could mean levels of service including and other options other than expanded times of service? Since when you say levels of service, I understand where the mayor is coming from. Like, what does that mean?
I guess my question could be to administration, is it not, is it clear? Do you need more words to make it more clear? What, what? I guess I'm asking for.
Yeah, maybe if council, I mean, maybe it would be something, you know, to meet concerns expressed by residents. So again, it, you know, it's not talked about going to new locations to service visitors. But administration is also hearing from residents. And I think we have a pretty good sense. We can certainly present counsel with feedback that was received. But it sounds like, you know, the vast majority of that is about people wanting to be able to use the bus to go to work early in the morning. People wanting to be able to have their high school age students, junior high and high school age students, be able to use the bus early in the morning, go to school. So it probably is earlier service, but not exclusively. And we just maybe like to have that latitude in case there are any other significant themes that come up between now and then.
So I would consider that a good motion then.
I can certainly change the motion a tiny bit. Am I allowed to do that? Okay, I'd like to direct administration to bring forward information about the cost of increasing transit levels of service to meet concerns expressed by residents to the twenty twenty four budget discussions.
Sounds good to me. Other counselors, your worship? Okay, I'm gonna call it. All in favor? One, two, three, four. Any votes? One, two, three. All right. That's carried. That's the three fours and four threes today. It's good to see. All right, any other comments while we're, before we move on to seven point seven internet access solutions? And before, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I feel like I've really been on this mic today. I wanted to, before we move past this topic, just touch on something that actually you said earlier about Parks Canada's contributions and how public rest is for residents. And it would be great to have visitors in some capacity paid. Just also want to point out that our counterparts down in that use some of their visitor parking program money to fund their public transit.
It's good way, and I'm starting to buy in, so I'm not anchored down in my old positions, but I appreciate that. We should have one. Yes, so that was my next thing. We do have a couple of things that might look like there we can move past, but I think including having a full session near the end. We should probably take somewhat of a break for lunch and recharge. It is a long day. We do have another meeting coming up. How, how does the rest of council feel about that? So now, should we go for forty-five minutes, come back a quarter after one, or should we take a full hour? I'm now working on consensus here. I know that's different for other people in different time zones.
Are you saying I should break for breakfast?
Yeah. Forty-five minutes or one hour? One hour, okay. So we're going to return back here at one thirty. One, so one hour and sixty-one minutes. Thank you.
Great. Welcome back. Short time for you. Nice break for us, if anybody's watching. And having said that, I apologize for the extra levity today, but just feel the energies down here today, so just want to keep things a little bit more upbeat and humorous. It's not that we're not taking things seriously here. All right, so we last left off having some internet access issues. And maybe we'll have some solutions going forward. We're at seven point seven. Hopefully, everybody online can hear me and us. Thumbs up, counselors over there? Okay, I'll take that. Yes, go ahead. Director Reed.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Demota and all of council. So the item before you is a return of the Internet Access Solutions item. And the recommendations are that committee recommend council direct administration to include the cost of purchasing three laptops and three smart hub sticks in the twenty twenty four budget for loan through the Library of Things. And that would be in approximately ten thousand dollars budget. We would have a more accurate number at the budget deliberations should council send this to the same. We also have a recommendation that committee directs administration from a partner organization to the Connecting Families Initiative. If doing so is within existing capacity and budget, there's a little more work to do there, but if it's a good effort, we would want to participate. Alternatives, of course, committee can direct administration to return to a future committee to hold with more information should we desire. And as ever, of course, any option that council were to currate uh is in your purring. So the background, at the August twenty third, twenty twenty two meeting, committee directed administration to explore opportunities for townwide internet internet access. The motion followed discussion from the community conversation of April to June twenty twenty two report. Administration returned to committee on April eleventh, twenty twenty three with a report on what it would entail to deliver townwide internet access. And we called this a high-cost, high-access solution. Because of the high cost, administration did not recommend going that route. At the April eleventh meeting, committee directed administration to seek out and apply for opportunities for partnerships and or grants. For small-scale, vulnerable, population-specific internet access solutions. And so in the discussion with that direction, administration looked into a number of low- or no-cost opportunities for the connectivity needs. Of the vulnerable population. And so option one is vulnerable laptops with the smart hub USB sticks. And so these become mobile data SIM plans from laptops. Um and smart hub USB sticks would offer temporary internet access. Budget for the purchase of these three items, of these items, rather, the three laptops and three sticks. Be about ten thousand dollars. And we propose that the laptops and smart hub USB sticks would then be in the Library of Things or free sign out by all residents. In the last report to council, it was mentioned that Telus has in the past donated these same items through their social impact program to Yellowhead County. Administration contacted Yellowhead County to learn about the program. And while they did initially receive donations from Telus, Telus no longer offers that same program. And so that donation would not be available to us. Yellowhead County did indicate that the devices have been in very high demand and have been signed out. Four hundred and sixty-eight times in the last four years across their three communities. Which is a long period of seven days, and then taking into the into account that long period, it would seem each device has been in nearly constant use. Um uh two, the Connecting Families Initiative offers affordable home internet to low-income individuals, seniors, and people with disabilities. Eligible Canadians were mailed access codes and then can apply through um any of the providers uh through their programs. Um three of which are listed there. Community Outreach Services has already supported clients and will continue to do so in accessing this program if they receive their code. Um that said, government-assisted refugees may have not received the code, meaning they would not be able to access the program. Settlement agencies can inquire about becoming a partner organization to ensure that these folks can benefit from the Connecting Families Initiative. Administration has contacted two organizations that are partners when calculating on the medicine act. They advise from their perspective, the partnership is worth it. If that option seems feasible within our existing spoke capacity authority embedded. All of the, all of the words today, uh administration recommends that means how they just for selling services that would apply to become a partner as well. Then, if we are successful, any client who's a government-assisted refugee can apply with settlement worker and receive very low-cost internet plan for twenty-four month period. From nine ninety-five to nineteen ninety-five a month. Uh clients would also have access to free refurbished mobile device and a low-cost twenty-five a month payment. Settlement services would help the initial application and set up of the equipment. There is no formal recording required by Telus. And a partner organization is not obliged to continue being a partner if it does not work. So strategic relevance, uh of course, take proactive steps to reduce the risk of people becoming vulnerable and respond when they are. Embrace our growing diversity, leverage and create opportunities for greater inclusion. Include an environmental lens onto our decision-making and operational plans. And so we wanted to highlight here, the Library of Things promotes the sharing of things instead of multiple purchasing of new. Promoting what we know as a circular, less wasteful economy. Um inclusion considerations, the digital divide is a term that became more prevalent as COVID nineteen took hold. Those with internet access and digital literacy are faring much better than those with poor connectivity and a low level of understanding of how to use technology. Exploring options to increase access to internet and the technology to interact virtually or digitally is one way we can offer internet access to Jaskreits who may otherwise. The risk of further isolation of vulnerability. A key partner in our efforts is the Jaskreit Fund Education Center, who are already offering digital literacy courses and workshops. Uh the relevant legislation is policy E zero one five, the United Policy. And the financial resources to purchase these laptops and sticks are not in the current twenty twenty four draft budget, but should council ask us to, we would. And I am ready for questions.
I have one uh right after that, if there are any other hands up. I was just wondering um. Why this isn't included in the draft twenty twenty four budget, like had to be. Uh just I read through the. CAO obligations on. It's straight as I doesn't, in my policy, there's nothing for stripping. It would be just adding it there, be part of the discussion. Right? Well, go ahead.
Uh I can certainly speak for why we have an item in front of council today and it's because council asked us to recover.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, so we are, we are closing that loop.
Okay, um.
Yeah, that's all. But having it on budget, but that not be considered, I guess not, because if it's like kind of answering, yeah, I apologize. I'm not trying to. You know, insult anybody. It's just serious. Okay, uh any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna go um. Counsel Hall, uh your worship, and Counsel Waxer, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is, um since this motion was made last August, how often? Is this, are you experiencing what this barrier at other services?
Uh Deputy Mayor Demota through Counsel Hall, that's an excellent question. Um I I do not have a stack for that. I know that anecdotally, it still comes up fairly often. Comes up in community conversations. But those are anecdotes. I don't have part of them, sort of. Um even should council wish to direct us to come back again, I could come back with more details like that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Reed. It came as sort of an unexpected um solution from my perspective, but I appreciate it. I need more information about. The smart hub USB stick and and what it actually permits or needs.
Uh certainly, uh thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota through to your worship. Um. Uh I, can I just address your first comment? Did the sort of surprising solution proposed is because we didn't find any other solution out there? And so we wanted to tell council that if you want this to be a priority. This is the only way we've found thus far. There's no other programs that were in the past uh available. So. That's why you see perhaps what what it might look a little unique. Um and then secondarily, uh your second question or comment was. Uh basically, if you have a cellphone, it comes with um a SIM card that allows data network access. Laptops don't always do that. And so, and also, it's possible to transfer this smart stick from one laptop to another. And so it it, that's where the, in essence, the connection to the cellphone data plan exists, would be in that uh stick. Um and so, you know, should a laptop go down, the stick might still be able to be used on someone else's laptop. Uh that's the functionality as I understand it. I'm not the best technical expert, but that's what I know to date.
So the stick is independent of. The the internet access at any location. So in other words, if somebody. Borrows the laptop and the stick from the Library of Things and goes to an area of town. Which is notorious for its poor internet connection. This will still enable them to have. Internet access despite the failings of the system itself.
Uh Deputy Mayor Demota through to your worship. Uh it depends. So if, when you say notoriously uh bad wifi connection. If you mean hardline connection, then this may work better. But these are in essence cellular devices. So if it's a part of town that has a bad cell coverage, it will have bad cell coverage for this device as well. So it doesn't solve any of the infrastructure problems. What it does allow is for someone to have. If they aren't in a place in town that is a cellphone-dead area, then they would be able to work. Do their job applications, do whatever government forms, and or watch a bit of Netflix, whatever uh would be. Uh uh their desires, that's what they could do with this, as long as they had cellphone coverage.
All right. Perhaps I'm beginning to understand it. As I initially understood the request um to pursue townwide internet access. Um that's a systems issue which we can't fix since um an out-of-the-box. Proposed solution. But I'm still wondering whether, um let's see, the first of the these solutions, which is the Library of Things. Will meet the needs of. Those who are subject to the limitation now. That is, there are people who just, still like, for. Counsel Milnick and Mal, they just don't have reliable connectivity. Um and will that reliability increase if they borrow from the Library of Things? And go on home, will they be better off than they are now?
Uh thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota through to your worship. Uh the short answer is no. So uh if anyone, for example, has a device already and they live in a place that has poor cell coverage, this system solution rather is not for them. We are talking about a solution for someone who doesn't have a device with a a data plan. This this is the level of vulnerability we're at. We're not at um. You own a device and it doesn't always work well. We're we're trying to meet the vulnerable people who don't have that kind of quality device. Uh and if they live in a place that doesn't have great cell coverage, they will still be at the the whim of that coverage.
I think you, Mr. Reed, um. I see if Mr. Given wants to, um I mean, I would just like to ask Mr. Reed one more question. Mr. Given has done.
You don't. Uh uh Deputy Mayor Demota, the only thing that I was gonna add is, for that instance, your worship, so if there was somebody who, the concern was. A technical matter. That they had poor cellular reception, um and they did not have, because they could not afford. Wired internet access through Shaw or Telus, then the second solution would probably be best for them. I think somebody was relying, you know, could only afford their cellphone, and they were relying on their cellphone to provide internet access. But in their area of town, it it didn't work. Then the alternative in this report would be the the second, the Connecting Families Initiative, which, you know, a number of the internet service providers. Somebody can get home internet service, which is typically through wire or fiber optics, or whatever the case may be, that would be reliable. And under those programs, it can be at a lower cost. So what administration is solving for here is that, is the financial barriers issue? Less than the technical coverage issue. Um and if there was certain combination of the two, the the best solution for somebody would be the second software number of questions.
I appreciate that. And then the the secondary question relates then to the the second proposed solution. So for that, for those, that eligible segment of the community that would qualify. They would get potentially a repurposed device. And a cheaper plan. But still be subject, of course, to. The system limitations which are prevalent in the town, which. Was the reason for the for the request in the first place. That is, the the dead zones and stuff, they. Doesn't solve that problem at all. It gives access to devices and plans to those who couldn't otherwise afford them. But it doesn't address the townwide internet access issue directly.
Uh Deputy Mayor Demota through your worship. That's absolutely correct. This um uh course of action we've taken. With council's advice and direction, uh split, in essence, we we separated out the townwide internet access. As a high-cost, high-access solution, and we didn't pursue that any further. Um but at the same time as the townwide access was brought to our attention, also was the vulnerable people. Who couldn't afford a a cell data plan or who didn't have a device. And so when we split, we left the. The uh high-cost, high-access option sort of off the table, and now we're addressing that second prong, if you will.
Those are my questions, thanks.
Certainly, that, Counsel Waxer.
Thank you, uh through you Deputy Mayor to uh Director Reed. Uh my question is, where, from where does the code in the uh on on the second uh. The second solution come from? Is that through income tax data or um I was. A little bit confused as to where the code might come, and wondering if it is through income tax, if that is. Again, dependent on the person having filed re filed their income taxes recently.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Demota through to Counsel Waxer. Uh yes, it is um, I believe the two require, or the two. Um ways that you can get your code is if you are getting either the maximum Canada Child Benefit. Or the maximum guaranteed income supplement, and that is the entry point to receiving your code. Um and and thus why uh new immigrants to Canada, of course, wouldn't have either of those yet. And and um. Uh actually, wouldn't receive those until they were a certain status in our country. So. Um that's why there's a separate path for those new to Canada. Um does that answer your question, Counselor?
Uh yes, mostly, except uh so it it is, in fact, dependent on have completion of the most recent years um. Income tax uh filing income tax in the most recent year.
That's the best information that we have today. That's all we know, yes.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions? Certainly. Before any other thoughts uh come in, um just looking at the recommendation itself, um and. In the last line there, right after USB sticks. Um should that be into the proposed or the draft twenty twenty four budget? Because one thing that I hate getting caught up on, especially in the media is whether. Council passes a budget, whether it's an uh an increased budget or a decreased budget. We pass a budget. Um when it gets passed, so um sometimes we will approve. Uh a budget with an increase from last year and sometimes uh with a decrease from what's proposed to us. So I don't wanna add this in there, assuming that it's going to be ten thousand dollars that's permanently part of that budget. Is part of our budget discussion. So I think if that could be worded a little differently, although um. This is committee recommending to council, it's not really hardcore, right? So. Yeah, if you wanna.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Demota, you know, maybe, uh appreciate where you're picking up on there. I think uh it could be that. Uh committee refer, um so I don't know that needs council approval because committee has already referred some items to the budget discussions. Um so it could be committee refer uh the cost of purchasing and so on. So really, as you know, committee saying, oh, we're interested in that idea, and we would like to consider it in the context of the overall budget presentations. And that administration would know to show it. Um the, you know, the, rather than necessarily. Including it in the budget, which sort of presupposes that it's built in.
Mm-hmm.
Um but again, we're happy to take whatever direction. Um but if committee just wish to refer this to budget, so that you get a chance to see it in the context of the overall budget. Um that we can work with that as well.
Does that make it a little easier for others? Counsel Waxer, you have your hand up.
Sorry, one other question um through you to Director Reed. Um was around the uh the loaning uh agency being the Library of Things. I wonder if you might um. If if it may cause uh the uh the computers and the sticks to be uh. Uh loaned out to people who just might choose not to buy a a laptop or whose laptop is out of commission. Which might um uh prevent someone with vulnerabilities from from getting, from accessing it. If if it might be better uh loaned through um, say, community outreach services or the employment center.
Deputy Mayor Demota, through to Councilor Waxer. What we contemplated was ease of access. We certainly could bring those into the outreach office and and have the outreach workers be the gatekeepers. I think we would just contemplate that. It it, the budget would change, of course, but the operations, how we make it happen would change. But we can certainly think about that and see what operationally makes most sense. This made the most sense for ease of access for the residents. But your idea is valid and we'll have to think about that. Go ahead.
My thought was just that if in fact council approves this with the thought to ensure the access to to the vulnerable, we, by putting it into broader circulation, it potentially has has some concerns that way.
Are you, Councilor Waxer, suggesting time limits on a session? Is that, and is that something that's considered by administration? I'm sure that's in the details of our. Go ahead, sir.
So Deputy Mayor Demota, regarding time limits, the items, all of the items in Library of Things do have time limits. And so, yes, we absolutely expected to put time limits on these loans. And one of the, of course, ways that we work is we take in information and then we adapt, modify, improvise, all those great words. So, you know, we would see in the first few months how it's going. But yes, there would absolutely be time limits. I believe we were going to target a week, just as what's successfully happened in other communities.
Would, Councilor Waxer, would that address some of that concerns yet? I mean, maybe not all of them.
Potentially, I guess from my perspective, there are many things that would, that the community would benefit from having in the in the Library of Things, including computers. But if if we were, if our interest was ensuring internet access for the vulnerable, then I worry that by putting it Library of Things, it opens it up to much broader population. That's my only thought. And and perhaps there would be other requests, capital requests to go into the Library of Things, because there are, there could be arguments for many things that would be very valuable.
Including our favorite ones. I'm gonna go. Okay, I'm gonna go to Mr. Given, Mr. Melnick, Councilor Hall and Mayor. Sorry, I should have said Councilor Melnick.
Deputy Mayor Demota, thanks. We'll see if everybody else is in the list as well as you have. I'll just say, you know, remind, remind council that really here we're saying, is council interested in this cost? And program details would be something that, you know, if council said yes at some point in the future with this budget or wherever, then administration would work on the the program details. So we, I think that these are a number of important points that I don't, Director Reed is considering. And the such question is, is council even interested in this? And if so, you know, is that something you want to see it and consider it budgetable?
Well, I think that that's a little help for me during next, but I had the meeting today and I really appreciate that because I always get beat up afterwards for having long meetings and it's probably because I talk a lot and let other people talk a lot. So if a lot of this debate could take place there, then I would welcome it there. And I really like, you know, just having that loose exception. Councilor Melnick, Councilor Hall, Mayor Ireland, you up first, sir?
Go ahead to Councilor Hall.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just wanted clarity to address Mayor Ireland's comments earlier about the original motion, which I'm quite positive I made. And it wasn't the intent of the motion I made, which I'm getting better at making motions, but it wasn't to explore the connectivity of internet around town. It was more to support vulnerable people experiencing technology barriers.
Like that, okay, your worship. Should I go back to Councilor Hall? Or actually, Councilor Melnick?
I was drafting.
Okay. He's drafting behind. We'll be here.
I appreciate all of that. And I am sensitive in particular to Councilor Waxer's point that if the intent is to add the ability of lending things to a vulnerable population, then it makes sense that there be some restrictions, but it's not impossible perhaps to impose the restrictions on the Library of Things. So here's, here's some computers and here is the eligible population that's entitled to to sign them out. I think that what Councilor Waxer is saying is that there is a target audience for these items and it's the vulnerable sector of the community. It's not just for everybody. And so we should, we should ensure that those in greatest need have greatest access. And I, I would, I would adopt that. So I am prepared to make a motion and we, and we can debate all we want. My motion is that committee direct administration to include a $10,000 budget item for the purchase of three laptops and three smart USB sticks in the proposed 2024 budget. I would leave it at that. We can discuss later whether that could be realized internally through outreach services or through the Library of Things. But I agree with the initiative. I think there's merit in it. So I would leave the motion at that. And I would continue, although we haven't discussed this to any great extent, but continue the motion to say that committee direct administration to become a partner organization to the Connecting Families Initiative. If doing so is within existing capacity and budget.
Sounds good to me. Councilor Melnick, I know that you wanted to get some more information or.
Point of order.
Or yeah, what point of order there, but no, no, that's fine. And I'm a little loser here today. RM, you got some?
I think the spirit of what was presented is to be one solution. I think when we get into budget discussions, I wouldn't mind talking about additional hotspots in the community, which is not part of this particular item, but potentially setting up another two or three hotspots in the community for our population to be able to comfortably go. I know we have the library and Activity Center as well as, I believe, the Aquatic Center. We may have an opportunity to set up one or two other hotspots for residents to be able to take advantage of complimentary Wi-Fi.
I think that's a good point. Those are good points. And maybe if you have any connection to the board at the Camioli Sands, I would recommend that for them too. Okay, so again, we we understand what the motion on the floor is. Yeah, you got it? I know that I don't want to tax the mayor too much today. So everyone else? Do you don't have any questions or debate? May I call it? All right, all in favor? Okay, that's carried. None opposed? Any more discussion on internet access solutions before we move on to 7.8? Thank you for that. So we are now at 7.8, external dressing rooms update. Again, that's you, Director Reed.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Demota and the rest of council. The partnership with Tourism Jasper, and I will just say Tourism Jasper has worked very hard to make this a possibility and then a reality. So we will be having temporary trailers arrive sometime in November. And, you know, once they are delivered, we'll operationalize them as fast as we can. And so the dream or the hope is that they are in service before the end of November. There are no tournaments scheduled in November. So we're not losing anything at this point by taking November to get this right. And there are tournaments booked for December that are planning to use these rooms. And so, and then also January, February and March. So we're looking forward to having this increased level of service during our construction period. And I would again just thank Tourism Jasper for their efforts here to to make a creative solution come, come to fruition. I, I don't know if council needs any, like, review of what the project is. If you have any questions, I can certainly speak to it. I will say that our minor hockey and our adult teams are really looking forward to also being able to use these. They won't just be for tournaments. They'll be available every day for all of our regular league play and and evening play. So it's, it's a real win-win in that tournaments can be here this this winter, as well as our residents will gain some change rooms that they can use. So yeah, if you have any questions about that verbal update, I'm certainly open to.
Thank you very much for that detail. I'm opening up to other councillors who wish to speak, ask questions. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. This is somewhat tangential, but related to these trailers. I am still uncertain what the new ruling by Hockey Canada might mean. So if we have the trailers, I take it they're one large dressing room. If people are encouraged to show up, at least partially dressed for hockey. But if they don't, it appears to me that the expectation is that the facility will provide individualized change rooms for those who need to get changed. And I, I don't know how we intend to accommodate that and how that might change the timing required to get teams prepared to get on the ice and off the ice again. Have we looked at that? Do we have a plan?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Demota, through to to your worship. So a couple of things, right now we have one dressing room. And so there is a lot of creativity being, being exercised by our residents and visitors. And we are seeing sometimes some people are changing in the bathrooms. But these trailers, there will be, and I should call them skids more accurately. So they will not be on wheels. They'll be delivered on a skid, so much closer to ground level. And, you know, quite a bit different than than a trailer. I should have said skid to begin with. They are 60 feet long, split down the middle. So there will be two rooms in each of two trailers, 12 by 30 rooms, which is similar to the smaller rooms we've had in our previous iteration of our rink. So in those four rooms, that does give us a lot of flexibility, plus the fifth room, which we have on site. So, so we can offer the same flexibility that we were before we even discussed all these renovations with these two trip, two skids and four rooms. As far as Hockey Canada's ruling and Alberta, Hockey Alberta signing on, everybody has signed on. It, it may change the flexibility that we have going forward. But for right now, you are correct, your worship, in that we still need to do the best we can to provide the service that the clients need. And so with us getting back to five separate rooms, we feel that we are able to do that as needed.
So it's satisfying. Your line of questions are in a tangential form. It's the first time in 16 years ever you occurred to use that word and I love it. I had to write it down. Put it in basket for later. Councilor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. This season, so far in my experience with my son playing hockey and coaching a girls' hockey, the new Hockey Canada policy isn't really much different than what normally happens. It just requires that you wear a first layer and most, most of the, like, I, there, I don't think there's been any issues yet. So I, I don't know that there will be issues in these skids, if you want to call them. It, it's a new policy that honestly doesn't really feel like anything has much changed, just based on what, just based on my experience.
Deputy Mayor Demota and council. To be clear, they are modular buildings. So that's what I should have called them from the get go. Modular buildings, they're being produced in Edmonton by a company called Box Modular. And I'm told by Tourism Jasper that Box Modular is doing very well with both the price and the product. So I'll throw out that little bit. Box modular buildings that will be arriving to, they'll go in the driving lane, just as a refresher. They'll go in the driving lane on Pyramid Lake there on the eastbound side facing the the building by the new temporary arena entrance.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Zoomies, anybody got a hand up over there? You know, okay, just making sure. All right, any further questions on the update? I'm satisfied. I really appreciate it. I'd like to congratulate everybody in the partnership and and making things happen in the community and recruiting some of our tournaments and visitation to Jasper. So that's a big bonus for, for a lot of people. Okay, if there's no further discussion on external dressing room update, I believe that brings us to 7.7, 7.8. Feeling painful. A different anagram. 7.9, Councilor Melnick, update on the Iceland?
Yes, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Demota. I realigned things here a little bit. I'm hoping everyone can hear me. I, I do wish to bring up the couple of circumstances recently with equipment problems at the ice plant. I think we've spent someplace between 800 and a million dollars on the ice plant, depending on what you want to include or not include on, on this particular item. And it's been over a couple of year period with COVID challenges and so on. I guess my questions would be, you know, how serious were the situations? Were they preventable? And as we move into the period of time we just talked about with the change rooms, where we're going to be having tournaments, an ice plant going down on a Thursday or Friday prior to a tournament could have 40 or 50,000 dollars of negative impact to the community and revenues. So I, I just want to have a better understanding of what occurred in the last two incidents and what the steps are moving forward. Both what did we learn and preventative.
Thank you for that. I'm going to ask Director Reed to follow up.
Certainly Deputy Mayor Demota and through to Councilor Melnick. So I, I think, well, so what happened and what did we learn? Let, let's start there. So we have had two separate incidents. They were both on Saturdays. So in the span of really eight days, we did have two separate ammonia leaks that occurred. Both of them were, the response from the fire department was excellent. The response from the staff was excellent. And I will say the response from the project manager and the ICOM team was also quite good. And I will say the response from the uh project manager and the ICOM team was also uh quite good. Um, uh, the first incident was an easy one to say, well, that's growing pains. There were some uh nuts that uh were uh out of torque specification, and that can happen at the initial installation of a project, especially when the plant ramps up its ice demand. Um, and so in the second leak, we were starting to build the curling ice as an example. Uh, in the first leak, it was a little warmer that day. So we can look to the fact that, yes, a plant is going to experience temperature cycling. And the temperature cycling can show where some nuts were out of specification. And so the first leak, the nuts were torqued and uh the leak was uh mitigated. The second leak um was actually, uh, so if I say um a steel nipple, that's a length of pipe that's threaded at both ends and it connects to fittings. And so that steel nipple had a hairline crack in it. And so that could have been over-torquing. It also could have been a manufacturer defect uh for that piece of pipe or nipple, as it's called. Uh, so but again, so the first leak, the the service tech was sent out, dispatched immediately, arrived from Edmonton roughly four hours later and was able to deduce uh uh, you know, find the problem and solve it. Um, and then in this case, because it happened so quickly, um, we uh on our side in essence demanded that the contractor uh respond more fully. And the contractor, to his credit, did indeed respond more fully uh with uh what you might call a full systems over overcheck. So every nut that could be torqued, they checked them all. Every fitting that could be tightened, they checked them all. Um, could they have done that the the Saturday before? Quite possibly. Um. We are not their only clients, and so the tech perhaps had to go to another job. Uh, perhaps didn't see it as an issue because at the beginning, right? Um, the initial startup of a system like this, it is possible that in this first year, we're going to have one or two of these. And we've had our two, knock on wood. I I feel confident, partly because the way that ICOM responded to the second leak. They brought the tech in, the the tech uh stayed overnight. So he was able to give a full eight-hour shift and then also check uh everything the next morning to make sure that nothing else had changed. And also uh the there was a software tech that was able to stop in as well. And so the software tech does the tweaking of what he sees as uh for example, when uh when we go from one compressor load to two. And so how does the computer balance uh all of that? When we've done it a few times, the tech can say, oh, I see there's a um a bump here that I can sort of uh code out, that bump can now be smoothed over. And so um I have to say, I was very pleased with the way the contractor said, you're right. Two in a week is too many and we apologize, and here's what we're going to do. Um, we still have um a few uh deficiencies on that project, so we are still working through finishing that project fully. Um, uh, so what did we learn? I, other than the fact that it's a new system, and so new systems have growing pains, what we definitely learned is uh I would have demanded the tech stay the first time. It's unlikely he would have found that hairline crack until we ramped up to do the curling. The curling demand increased the temperature and therefore the pressure, and that revealed that cracked fitting or cracked nipple. So, I mean, in layman's terms, it's a new system that is getting its bugs worked out. Um. I I'm confident that we are getting good service. I'm confident that there's no safety risk to the public that it it because the building is now on the corner of our lot, um, it is far more visible when uh these kind of small leaks happen. Um, I should also mention that from a safety perspective, our previous uh charge or or ammonia load was I think three hundred pounds, at least two hundred anyway, but I think three hundred, and we now only have seventy pounds. Uh, so we're well under uh um, you know, that old load that we used to have. So the system itself is much less able to pro- to produce catastrophic results because we just don't have as much ammonia. Um, there are a couple of safety programs that we are going to institute. Uh, we're having a debrief meeting later this week, uh, and our response combined with the fire department. Uh, we're going to, you know, make sure that we're both understanding each other fully. Um. Uh, but so far it's been really good and and one might say a great safe way to have practices. So it was unfortunate, the one was two thirty in the morning, so all our fine brigade members had to get up. But um other than that, these have been actually very successful events, and I do want to tip my hat to the brigade for just excellent professionalism and quality of of knowledge of the ammonia situation, and it's been great. Um, how am I doing answering your questions, councillor Melnick? Are you frozen, sir?
There we go. Um, having to get up back onto audio. Uh, thank you. Um, I'm thinking that you've provided a good overview and and background and insight into what's occurred. And to your point about the emergency response, I think our members of the Volunteer Fire Brigade and and anyone involved um are to be commended as well. Um, I'm sounding positive that there's a a follow-up for how we can uh maybe better, um, but I shouldn't say better. Uh, we, you can never anticipate a breakdown, but how we may be able to uh do additional preventive maintenance, maybe, on a system that we're all learning, I guess, at this point. How it's operating, because it's right now just getting up to capacity. And I think that's the important part of of what I want to, what I think we can learn from this, is that we know there'll be hiccups. But, you know, taking every step we can to ensure that that we do everything to avoid a situation, especially around a product like ammonia, but also just the 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 fact of of closing down uh uh an operating plant for a period of time. Um, and I do appreciate the the detail you did go into.
Hey, thank you very much. Uh, councillor Melick, good question. Thank you very much for the information, Director Reed. I have uh mayor like to ask some more.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demora. Question that I had anticipated from councillor Melnick that didn't get asked. You mentioned, Director Reed, that we are still working through efficiency lists with this particular unit. Um. What does that mean in terms of the start date of the warranty period, if anything at all?
Well, the way the contract document reads is the warranty begins at sort of substantial completion slash commission of the system. Um, we believe that the warranty uh period is either only about a month old or begins right away here. So we, you know, beginning a month ago or today doesn't really change much. Um, uh, however, we're still in, um, I guess, I wouldn't say negotiations, but clarifications with the the service provider on on our actual warranty. But all of these events, of course, are covered under either commissioning or warranty. So we, you know, we did not pay out of pocket and they do not um affect a- anything uh other than we did lose some games, of course, and and curling was delayed an extra day.
And whatever the start date might be, how long is the warranty term? Uh, one year?
Personally, I'd like the extra three weeks if we can negotiate that. Uh, that was a good question. I did have that circled on on mind if we didn't get to it for a question. Um, I did speak to somebody that has experience in this field, and they said to me that this type of uh equipment and this style of build uh, you know, tends to have a lot of different variables and and the the longer distance that these things have to travel from its manufacturing site and then the combination of everything. Um, this is irregular of something to happen, and although odd to have, you know, for that to have back-to-back, airline fracture could have it anywhere, right? Like you said, so uh, I'm glad to to at least feel comforted that you're comfortable and and feel confident in what we have. Really good question I had. I think I was driving by right when the alarm started sounding off, and I wasn't sure, and I stopped. And I I looked and I didn't see a blue light anywhere. I didn't know if that's something that is part, do we have one? And is that, okay, I'm not sure where to have looked on that one, but I was already on uh Pyramid Lake driving. By the time I thought to to go and contact everybody, the people are on the scene.
Um, thank you councillor Demora. So there there is a blue light, an audible alarm uh that both are on the Pyramid Lake face of that new uh building that we have. Um, yeah, okay, that's good. Um, I think that's it to my questions. Are there any other?
Sorry. Councillor Melnick, this was your uh item. Uh, are you completely satisfied with uh what you asked and before we move on?
I I am, and I'd like to thank His Worship for following up on some of the other questions and um, I think uh good for us to know where we are with the project. It's been a long time coming and uh uh looking forward to great things from our new plant and our renovated arena. And to the point, there will be some growing pains, but you know, if we can minimize um, things, like I say, through either preventive maintenance or through it. Um, you know, perhaps there may be some additional training for our staff that could be provided by the uh by the uh supplier. Uh, since we are in a little bit more remote location and we're always at the subject of weather that a technician may or may not be able to make it to Jasper. I mean, uh, I know what the temperature is here, and I know what the temperature and the conditions are in Alberta. And uh it would have been a little dicey to travel um yesterday, I believe, on Highway sixteen.
Yeah, thank you for that. Hey, having no further uh discussion on the ice plant update, um, that moves us to agenda item eight. The motion action list, and I believe that's in your wheelhouse, Mr. Given. Um, what would you like to go through with us?
There are a few different items uh that I think are mostly highlighted, uh where administration is recommending um some deferrals, just in terms of updates to timelines. And then there are the three items that administration can recommend could be removed, community-wide internet access, business license review, and also transit RFP award. Um, those three reports were delivered here today. Uh, and then you'll see that there are some updates to timelines that are being recommended by administration. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any questions about those, or councillor could make motion to update the motion action list as recommended.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councillor Wilson. Um, my question is uh the Clean Entry Improvement Programme. I think I may have been absent when it moved up, moved to February twenty twenty-four. Although it's the only item on there from twenty twenty-two, so we're coming up on a year. Uh, we've heard today that uh some stuff go to budget, uh, and you know, budget's two weeks away, but there is capacity for that. Yeah, there is no capacity for uh the Clean Entry Improvement Programme. If there's not going to be action on it, I suggest we maybe remove it, but uh or maybe there is good reason why it's been pushed forward.
Yeah, uh Deputy Mayor Demora, this is exactly the kind of conversations that we like to have with motion action lists. So councillor knows, you know, where things are and and uh, you know, the reason behind the pace of things being in pencil. Uh, so on this item, there are a couple of things that have slowed the pace. First was the departure of our municipal energy manager uh who was sort of shepherding this along with finance and administration. So they lost some capacity to kind of keep moving the ball along, so to speak. Uh, and then additionally, and this is actually the larger part, um, we've been working with Alberta municipalities and the Municipal Climate Change Action Centre. Uh, and so there were a number of months where uh we had our draft bylaw in with them for review and feedback. Um, it may have come back. And that's an example of how not having a point person on this is a bit of a challenge. I don't have the status directly at hand. Um, but we waited a number of months because there was just such a queue for other municipalities that are interested in doing the same thing, that they had a backlog. So all of those things um were the thing, were what came together to slow the pace down on this. So it isn't uh a lack of interest on behalf of the administration um or a sort of estimation of the relative priority, so that we didn't have a lead on pushing the project forward. Uh, and the partner that we were working with uh provides some feedback, uh had a delay of a number of months in providing that feedback to us. Um, administration has uh is looking at opportunities to sort of fill the gap left by our municipal energy manager um under potential contracts uh to move forward this and some other projects. Um, but I think this just reflects the reality that um there was some significant work that would need to be done before um, uh, we were in a position to recommend how much a project like this should be capitalized at budget. Uh, so we didn't see that that was going to be able to be done before the budget.
Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, thanks for that. Um, I just wanted to make one uh thing correction. Um. You know, Konya Pan initiatives is set for December twenty twenty-four, but I'd assume that should be twenty twenty-three. That's the last item on the uh actual.
Yeah, uh, this one was just recently uh at committee, I think it was the last week, last committee that we had. So not last week, last committee. Um, and there were a number of steps, uh, obviously there, this is theirs, this is fresh from from that October tenth meeting. Um, and just looking at workload, um, these are all things that need to happen. Um, and obviously, starting up and advertising for a committee for new committee members would be something that we'd do to start off the twenty twenty-four year.
Right, but yeah, but the date is twenty twenty-four.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, okay, sorry. I missed. Yes, yeah, yeah, sorry. Yes, I understand. Yeah, thank you.
I was just about to have a mighty connection there.
Uh, your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demora, through you two. Uh, Mr. Given, there are four matters recommended for deferral, but there are three other matters that were slated to return this month, and this is the last time that that could have happened, and it didn't. So what is the intent with respect to cannot drive crosswalks? Um, and the other two, and they are of greater concern because they're both matters brought forward by members of the public where we may have at least suggested um that we would deal with these this fall, and that is the bus parking zone and the stop sign uh at the intersection of Hazel and Gaki, and all three of those slated to be back this month, which hasn't happened. So what is the recommended deferral time for those?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Uh, all three of those items have been reviewed at a uh traffic advisory committee, the administrative committee, that breaks together members from different departments. Uh, that committee was slated to bring forward a report for this uh agenda. We just didn't make it there. So we can certainly bring it for the next uh committee, the whole meeting in November, so we should have highlighted that on this uh as you mentioned, deferred to November. Um, and uh looking at the minutes for the committee, uh, a number of these items are ones that would take substantial uh all of consultation. And so I think as as until up the cabinet, they go to RFD, they're going to see them, you know, in a few weeks' time. But really is, uh, they should be referred to the transportation master plan review uh so that they can be uh considered in that overall context, appropriate amount of public information. So I think it'll likely to see those come together as a bundle. Um, and we bring that as that report uh end up being from the traffic advisory.
Would it be fair then if we are going to uh approve amendments to the motion act action list to defer all of those to November this year?
Yes, Your Worship.
Good catch, Worship. I was going to say, uh, some of that public consultation came two years ago, a week ago. Um. But uh I understand where we have to go on on some of these as well. So uh with those amendments, um, if it's all understood uh by council, may I get someone to uh move to make a motion on accepting the uh motion action list as amended? Councillor Waxen. All in favor? Eight, not opposed. That one's carried. Right along. Um, I understand. Oh, councillor Melnick? There you go, yes.
So it does appear. That we do need a motion to extend the meeting to beyond four hours since we are. By any clock we look at in three different time zones. Four hours into it.
Six times. All right, uh, we have a motion, uh, to extend, uh, our. Maybe the whole meeting, um, beyond four hours. All in favor? Unopposed. That is also carried. Okay, love our resiliency, our tenacity. Um. And gently, I'd like to move on soon. Next thing, I'll be good to us. I'm, oh, yeah, I'm stretching. Um. I know we have a, yeah, exactly. Yeah, now it's my fault. Okay. Um. In an effort to keep things uh a little shorter, because we do have another meeting after this, being our organizational meeting. I might ask councillors to give. Updates from their past meetings for next week. And if you want to announce anything that's coming up this week, uh, please go ahead. Um, I had a few things that I I was going to address, but I'll wait. So, um, that'll save you a few minutes. Anyway. Worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. It is not in fact an appointment to a broader committee, but I have, um. A scheduled welcome to a group, um. Thursday evening, the Alberta Foster and Kinship Association, um. We discussed that informally a bit, some of this earlier today. It may be that unless I can ditch. The lung infection that is apparently bothering me, I may not be able to make that. So is there a councillor here that might be able to. Um, attend on my behalf on Thursday? Councillor Hall, thank you very much. I'll I'll be in touch. I'll I'll let the organizer know.
Yeah, if it's on Thursday, I'll be in uh. Into CFS, and if it's on any other day, I'm actually helping out with some audio visual there with uh. The local contract. Anyone else? All right. Um. Upcoming events. We have Melissa in front of us. Um, are there any additions to those upcoming events? Got the welcome week, the Pumpkin Path Food Bank fundraiser. Community Culture Night, which is a really good one. Not that the other ones aren't, uh, external group budget presentation. Um, that's for us coming on November fourteenth, and then the budget presentations.
That's the Pumpkin Path Food Bank fundraiser, I presume, is in fact October.
Yeah, I believe that would be October twenty seventh, unless it's just an update from what happened. Few weeks ago. We're not going to get everything right. Okay, I think that's it for those. And then, uh, we're going to move on to, uh. Agenda item eleven, which is a closed session meeting in camera, however you want to call it. And may I ask? The reason for that again?
Uh, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Demota. Uh, this is an item, uh, with respect to intergovernmental relations. Um, so we'll, uh, ask just my, well, I'll be the only one that will stay with the council. Uh, administration doesn't expect. And is requesting an action coming or emotions coming after this post session. Uh, so purely an informational update for council.
Okay, so, uh, so there you have it. So if if there is, uh, anyone, um. Online watching us right now, um, we, it won't be necessary to come back because we'll just be closing after coming out of. Um, our full session. So, uh, thank you very much. For watching us today and tuning in and for the future watchers, I really appreciate your time. May I have a motion to move in camera, please? Councillor Wilson? Oh, actually, I'm going to give this one to councillor Kellerman. She's, uh. Delayed, uh, remote there via satellite. Are you going to do a Phil Collins with us today? All right, okay. Thank you. We are now finished. Oh, councillor.
Quick, quick question. Are we reconvening at another, um. Zoom meeting? Are we, um, able to get to this one?
Okay, we're just going to pause for two seconds.